Is this live? It's not 7:00 yet, one minute. We're waiting for one more commissioner. We're live? Welcome to Millbrae Planning Commission on March 2, 2020. We'd like to start out the first item as the Pledge of Allegiance. For those who can, please rise with me.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stop, can I get a roll call, please? Yes? Your mic is not on. Yes.
Chairman Feng.
Present.
Vice Chair Quigg.
Present.
Commissioner Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Delay that for five seconds.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
Glad you can join us. So we got a full house. Do it, does anybody have any agenda review?
No.
We're all good? All right. So the first item on the agenda tonight is the minutes on September 3, 2019. It was a special meeting. It was a rather lengthy meeting, but does anybody have any comment on the notes? Ms. Quigg?
I must admit, getting minutes of September 3 on March 3 is like, a little overdue. My little brain is just not being able to handle that far back. So I would appreciate that in the future, the minutes are a little bit closer to the actual date. Thank you.
Do you leave noted? Anybody else?
I'm fine with them at this point. I do concur with Commissioner Quigg's comment, but I know we're going through some transition, so hopefully, moving forward, it will be better. I do have just one quick one, and it's a small one, but commission comments on the page 3. At the very, the very beginning, it says, "Joe," that's me, "was absent for the ADU discussion, but was watched." So, kind of sounds funny, so I watched the video of the session, so I just wanted to correct that.
I'll make a notation.
Yes, yes.
Speak to the mic, please, Bernadette.
I'll make a notation on that, Commissioner Joe.
Thank you. And I don't have any others, so I would just motion to approve with that one correction requested.
Any other commissioner have comments on September 3, 2019, meeting minutes? Mr. Wong?
No.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
In the commission comments for 210 Vallejo, this last, second to la, no, it's our last sentence, noted that it needs to be mindful to be a past and present, this is president for obstructing the view. I think that was my comment, and my comment was a bit more strong than that. So it, I don't know. I don't know how, I can't tell you exactly what I said, but it was a little bit stronger. But this is what we got, so that's all.
Where was it?
Oh, oh, yeah. It was a little stronger than that, but that's all I'm gonna say.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Joe and a second from Commissioner Davis, subject to some minor changes that you mentioned earlier.
Just that one change, but did Commissioner Davis want to make any amendments?
No, because I can't recreate what I said, so I'm just gonna let it go. It's on the record here that I said something stronger. If anybody really wants to know what I said, then go back to that meeting and watch it.
I believe it was, there was a concern for private homeowner rights and that views are not protected, so.
Yeah.
If you wanted to add something about to the effect of concern for private homeowner rights.
It's in there a little, I guess, it just doesn't feel as strong as my comment was, that's all. It was more emphasis than anything, so, thank you.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Joe and a second from Commissioner Davis. Votes, please. Five to nothing. September 3, 2019, meeting minutes been approved. Moving on to public communications, do we have any misspeakers slips that is not for Agenda 8A, but it's rather for a person who wished to comment on things that are not on the agenda tonight, but yet fall within the purview of this planning commission? Does anybody? Seeing none, we'll close public communication. Nothing on the concerned calendars, nothing on public hearing either. 8A, new business. New business, 8A, 97 Broadway. It's a planning commission study session to consider a zoning map and tax amendment to establish a planned development zoning district adjacent to an existing approved PD, 151 El Camino Real, to allow the construction of a new seven-story, 83-room state-licensed senior care facility with reduced onsite parking, reduced setbacks, and increased height located in an R3 multifamily district. Sam?
Good evening, commissioners. This project is located in the R3 zoning district, a resident, located in the residential multifamily district. Zoned higher-density residential. And these are the site development standards. Lot width 60 feet, area 6,000 square feet, allows a lot coverage of 75%. And for the floor area ratio, there's no limit, and the maximum height permitted is 40 feet. A little bit of background on this project. There's some previous planning commission meetings, meeting on this project. The application was first submitted back in September 2016. Conceptual plans were reviewed by planning staff, and at the time, staff recommended more neighborhood, more neighborhood-compatible design, reduced height, reduced density, and reduced scale and mass. On June 2017, a planning commission study session was held. At that time, the study session evaluated a proposed five-story, 60-foot in height building for a 49-bed senior assisted facility, and the applicants were requesting a conditional use permit to allow increased density, reduced onsite parking, and a variance exception for excess height and reduced setbacks. At the time, the planning commission provided feedback on the first design that was submitted. There was a request to provide revised plans that would reduce the building size and mass, reduce the height and the number of, the number of units or rooms, and revise the design to fit the character of the neighborhood. In addition, planning commissioners requested more information about the incentives that would be provided for public transit, the visiting patterns of the existing residential care facilities in Millbrae, and requested increased onsite parking. They also wanted to see some increased landscaping to the proposed project. This project, as I mentioned, or I also wanted to mention, has had two previous architects and two different designs. So the design before you tonight addresses many of the planning commission comments and recommendations as far as the parking and the architectural design, but we still would like to receive feedback on this design as it is a new revised design. The main objective of the study session this evening is to review the proposed project and provide input to the applicant and staff on three items. The applicant is proposing a planned development zoning district. We would also like feedback on the building mass and scale, and then the building design. So the first one, proposed planned development zoning district is that, we would like to find out if that's something that the commissioners and the public would be interested for this site. A planned development zoning district allows for more flexibility tailored to the uniqueness of a senior assisted facility compared to a typical multifamily unit, which is basically looking at apartments and apartment complexes. This is different in that it's a senior assisted facility. So some of the requirements for R3s, such as the, looking at the height, the parking, and the density mass, may be different, different for a senior assisted facility versus a multifamily apartment complex. A little bit on the project description. The proposal is to demolish the existing single-family residence and multi-unit apartment building and build a new senior assisted living facility on a 7,875-square-foot lot. Again, the study session is to consider a zoning map amendment to establish the planned development zoning district adjacent to an existing approved planned development, 151 El Camino Real, the Bellamore project, and to allow the construction of a new seven-story, 83-room state-licensed senior care facility with reduced onsite parking, reduced setbacks, and increased height located in the R3 zoning district. The building height would be seven stories, approximately 80 feet. The number of rooms would be 83 bedrooms, and the existing lot coverage is 46%. The proposed lot coverage would be 88%. The total gross building square footage would be 56,652 square feet. Currently, the existing site contains a single-family dwelling at 107 Chadbourne Avenue, and then it has one structure, there's an existing one structure containing a three-story building with seven single-family residential units with addresses of 105 Chadbourne 95 and 97 Broadway. There's an existing five-single-car garage fronting Chadbourne Avenue, three for the apartments and two for the single-family residents. The existing height is 20 feet, and the existing lot coverage is 46%, where 75% is allowed. The FAR is 88% where there's no FAR limit. This is a location, the vicinity map of the site. The blue parcel here indicates the lot where the proposed senior assisted facility living, building would be located at. It's located at the corner lot, located at the corner of Chadbourne and Broadway. This is the general plan map indicating the location of where the project site is under the higher-density residential use for a general plan. And this is the zoning map. The circle, blue circle indicates the location of the R3 multifamily district as it currently is zoned. This is the existing site photos. This is the southwest corner of Broadway at Chadbourne Avenue, the existing apartment complex. This is facing the building on 97 Broadway. And then located on Chadbourne is a single-family home right at this location. Right above there is the existing church. This is a view of the area to give a little context of the height of the buildings. You'll notice that within the area, there's several duplexes, two-story duplex, multifamily apartment building complexes. There's the Millbrae Bible Church, the Bellamore condominiums located directly across here. And then there's a single-family home located here, but the majority of the residences in the surrounding area are multifamily two-story apartment complexes. This is a view looking southwest. Again, you'll see the Bellamore, the 88 South Broadway condominiums, the Millbrae Church, Magnolia of Millbrae, also a four-to-five-story, five-story building located about a block away. And this is the project site. So the findings required for a planned development. In approving any petition for a planned development district, the planning commission and city council shall make the following findings. The requested PD zone is consistent with the Millbrae general plan. The development standards of the requested PD zone will provide adequate protection for the surrounding land uses, and the design guidelines of the requested PD zone will assure architectural compatibility with the surrounding area and/or will set a high standard of architectural quality for the surrounding area. So I wanted to just point this out, this is what our code requires for a planned development with the findings need to be made. This is some information about the project. We'll construct a seven-story senior assisted living building with 83 tenant rooms, partial underground parking, and a rooftop garden with two managers' units. The lower basement would have parking for 16 staff parking spaces, 14 automobile lifts, and two standard spaces, mechanical room, elevator, and stairways. The upper basement would have eight guest parking spaces and a car lift system to enter the driveway and go down to the, for the lower floors, for the lower floor for the parking below. There's also bicycle parking provided and motorcycle parking. The first floor would have eight bedrooms, a lobby, kitchen, and trash room. The second through fifth floors would have 60 bedrooms, community room, lobby, and trash room. The sixth floor would have 11 bedrooms, and the seventh floor would have two manager units and a roof deck guarded for the residents' use. This is the building floor area schedule and the basement and roof garden areas. The gross total of 56,652 square feet. This is the breakdown of the bedrooms. So there's, on the first, second, and third, and fourth levels, there'll be single bedrooms with 11 studios on the fourth level. Then on the fifth level, 11 studios, mixture of both single rooms and studios. And then on the sixth level, we have four bedrooms, four single rooms, and three studios. The total bedrooms will be 83. The proposed parking would be 24 autos, there are spaces for 24. This is an increase from the originally submitted design. So back on June 5, 2017, during the first planning session, or study session, the proposal was for a five-story, 49-bed senior facility, and at the time, there were six spaces that were going to be provided. So the applicant has increased the amount of parking for the project and has redesigned the, the building also, which you will see shortly in a rendering. Wanted to provide a little comparison on the senior facility parking here in Millbrae, taking examples of two other senior facilities, the Cadence Living at Millbrae, 1201 Broadway. They have 144 beds, they're one- and two-bedroom apartments. They have 75 parking spaces. The Magnolia of Millbrae has 250 bedrooms, one- and two-bedroom apartments, and 144 parking spaces located in underground parking garages. The Cadence Living is surface parking. And then Broadway Longevity, that's 97 Broadway, the project you're looking at, we're looking at this evening, would have 83 studios and single rooms and 24 parking spaces. Now, one thing to keep in mind when you're looking at the comparison of parking here is that Cadence Living and Magnolia of Millbrae has additional parking spaces and has more, the clientele that are living at these, those facilities have independent living, there's a combination of non-ambulatory and more independent, younger seniors that are able to drive. So this facility at 97 Broadway is for seniors that are non-ambulatory. They will not be driving. So when you look at the rooms and the number of parking spaces, the 24 spaces are primarily for staff and guests. There will be a shuttle that will provide service to the residents of the senior facility to take them to appointments and to go to, on field trips and excursions if they, if they need to leave the facility, but the clientele will not be, the clients at the senior facility will not be driving. So it's a little bit different as far as the parking demand in comparing these two other senior facilities. This is the existing site plan. This is the existing apartments here and the single-family home, which will be demolished. And this is the proposed project site. It's an L-shaped project. This is the lower basement of the project. You'll notice that these are the lifts, so these are double parking spaces. And then these are two standard spaces. This is located in the lower level of the building. This is the upper basement, so the entry to the parking would be on the Broadway at this location. And there's two parking spaces located here, additional parking, seven parking spaces here with an accessible parking space located at this location. And this is where the lift operates, so the vehicle would drive in here and be lowered to the lower level for the additional parking. This will be the entry lobby, the main entry lobby to the building would be off of Broadway at the corner. And you'll note that the proposed development has two elevators and has two staircases, one located here at the corner and then also located at the back of the building. These are the single rooms on the first floor. There's a gathering lobby area at this, this location, and then a kitchen, a commu, kitchen for serving this entire floor located back here. This is the second level, a community room located along, at the corner near Broadway. Single rooms located back at the rear part location and the gathering lobby area here. These are, again, the elevators and the stairway located in the same, they're located throughout the building at that location, and then the trash, trash is located here, the trash collection room. This is the third floor. You'll note the spacing of the single rooms, and again, very similar distribution of the floor area to the second floor. This is the fourth floor. We have studios at this location and then four single bedrooms located back here. Again, you have a community room in the front and the gathering lobby located here. This is the fifth level. So the one thing to note about the fifth and the sixth levels is that they're, these are studios with kitchens. Now, these kitchens are actually just a space for a microwave location. This is to provide an extra amenity to the seniors, and so they're not full kitchens, but they do provide an extra amenity for the studio spaces. Again, the same type of design for the, for the sixth floor. The seventh floor, we have the roof deck and the garden area. This is the area where seniors would be able to come up and, you know, enjoy the sun, enjoy the garden, get fresh air. There's the two manager units located at the top here that managers will be living onsite. This is the roof plan. So this is the roof terrace garden. These are the proposed elevations. This is the north exterior elevation along Chadbourne. The applicant listened to the planning commission as far as redesigning the, the building to have a more Mediterranean mission-style character that is more compatible with Millbrae. They also added some landscaping along Chadbourne, and in this image, they're showing palm trees. This is the location of the adjacent church, and you can see these are the manager's units. There's a mixture of rectangular and arched exterior features to the building, some balconies with some railings, and then it'll have a mission tile roof along the sides. This is the south elevation. This is the east front elevation of Broadway. This is the background of the, as you know, it's an L-shaped building, so this is the back part of the building. Another thing to keep in mind is that Chadbourne slopes upwards. So at the location of the corner of Broadway, the vertical height is 80 feet, but on the side by Chadbourne at the rear, it's 75 feet because of the slope of the hill. This is the west elevation, and this is a rendering facing southwest. This is, you'll notice sort of a two-tone beige, and then the mission tile rooftop and the archways, and then the landscaping along Chadbourne. There is also an entrance located on the Chadbourne side, but the main lobby entrance will be off of Broadway at this corner. So staff and the applicant are available to answer questions, and we welcome input from the commissioners and members of the public on the project. In particular, we're looking for feedback on whether the proposed planned development zoning district would be something that would be supportive, the building mass and scale, and comment, feedback on the building design. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Feuding. Does any commissioner wish to make any, have any questions for staff at this moment? We can save for comments later. Yes? Ms. Davis?
General plan and downtown specific plan. We're working on both. What is the timetable for those, for updating them? The creating one, I guess. Downtown is creating and general plan is updating.
Yes, I'll defer to Roscoe Mata, our, our.
Yes. It's a good question. The, the general plan, as you know, and the specific plan has been, still has to be picked up again. We're rebooting the general plan update, and that's going to be running concurrently with the downtown specific plan as well. Currently, the timeline, we're still working on the timeline. I do know that the city council will be receiving a timeline on the general plan update at a meeting this month. We will, are anticipating about one to two years approximately, but we are still kind of figuring out the exact details on what the specific milestones are.
And does this fall in the downtown specific plan area?
This would.
Any other questions for staff at the moment?
I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Wong?
So given that the current zone for this property is R3, how does that work legally to allow this type of development within a residential zoned lot? And what's the premise for allowing it? What's the legal basis? And is there needed to be exceptions granted for that in order for that to occur?
So I'll go back to the slide. Findings. So these are the findings for a planned development zoning district. What it would entail is an amendment, a zoning amendment, a code amendment to allow that specific parcel to be classified as a planned development district. And in our code, a planned development district is permitted, and it can have its own specific requirements as long as it's contiguous to an existing planned development. requirements as long as it's contiguous to an existing planned development. So the project at 151 El Camino Real, the Bellamore, was a -- is located within the MSASP and was a planned development. So this site is eligible for a planned development based on our code. One of the reasons why you would, an applicant would pursue a planned development is in situations where the particular use doesn't quite fit into R3 mold. So as I was stating at the beginning of my presentation, an R3 is multifamily residential area. The zoning standards are designed for more apartment complexes, duplexes. There's height limits of 40 feet. There's density requirements based on units. This is a senior assisted facility that basically is building a project that would have rooms, not units. So it's because it's rooms and it's regulated by the state, which is allowed in this area in an R3, the applicant is requesting a planned development district to allow for more flexibility in terms of height, setbacks, and density and parking so -- because it's unique in that it's a senior assisted facility versus a R3 multifamily. So that's the reasoning behind that request. Now, the height limit for R3 is 40 feet. The height limits at the Bellamore, we did the comparison, Table C in the staff report, and neighboring buildings range from 45 feet at 20 Magnolia to 68 feet at 201 Chadbourne, that's the Magnolia of Millbrae. The 25 El Camino Real, 88 residents, condominium project, 62 feet. 151 El Camino Real, which is the Bellamore, approximately 65 feet in height. And then the parking structure at Millbrae-Bart Station is 62 feet in height. So there are buildings in the area that are higher than the 40 feet. Again, those are -- other ones are located within MSASP, some of those are. But there's sort of precedence for having a higher height in the area. The downtown specific plan and the general plan is envisioning higher height limits for the city of Millbrae. Now, they haven't been defined at this point because we're still drafting the general plan and the PDA. But there is -- the city is envisioning higher height limits to allow greater density and to allow, you know, more housing, which is a need right now in Millbrae as well in the Bay Area. There also is a need for senior housing in Millbrae. And in the staff report, the applicant did do a study and a survey looking at current housing or senior demand in Millbrae. And you go to page 11 of the staff report, the results of the survey indicate that there's about 610 beds available for seniors with a population of about 30% in Millbrae, equivalent to 6,982 seniors in Millbrae. So there is a growing demand for senior housing, and the applicant, property owner, is with this project attempting to provide more senior housing in Millbrae to meet that demand. The applicant also operates two other senior facilities in the city of Oakland, one downtown near 12th Street Art and another located near, I believe it's Kaiser Highlands. Oh, it's near Kaiser Hospital and -- or Highlands Hospital, sorry, in Oakland. So they come with experience operating senior housing facilities and would like to, you know, create a project here that would serve Millbrae. There are also residents in Millbrae.
I'd like to add that, just referencing the planned development section of the municipal code, section 10.05.1500, the purpose of the planned development district is where a special design proposal for a large-scale development makes it desirable to apply regulations more flexible than those contained elsewhere in the chapter. A planned development or PD district is to grant -- PD district may be established. The purpose of such district is to grant diversification in the location of structures and other site qualities while ensuring adequate standards relating to public health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience. And those -- ensuring the adequate standards relating to public health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience, those standards, as Sam had mentioned in his presentation, are located -- are the standards for the findings for the approval of the PD district. Should the commission decide that this is a project that could move forward? Thank you.
So a couple more questions then. If this site could be amended so that it's a planned development district, how much of this area then are we considering to develop into the special planning district? I mean, we're not going to go parcel by parcel, but I imagine that there's an overall plan that the city may have to allow this planned development district to extend. Is it going to -- do we have a map or does that depend on the general plan and so on? I guess the question is, is that, do we envision that all the adjacent lots in this block or how far do we extend that we expect there to be Kyra's buildings and allow zoning for a special development district so that it's more uniform, that eventually when we do develop the city and we do have a general plan, what do we -- do we have an overall vision of what this whole area will look like? It won't just be just an eight-story building and everyone else has to remain a, you know, duplex?
Yeah, Commissioner Wong, that's a great question. So as I mentioned earlier, the -- this property is within the downtown specific plan area, and the city is currently undergoing a general plan update and a specific plan to establish greater heights along in the specific area, which is along El Camino and within the downtown, and this property is within that area. Generally, the city is looking for additional height and densities within the study area. And I can't comment as to what those heights would be for this particular property or the area, but the city is evaluating different options, and it would be higher than the heights currently proposed for the R3 zoning district. So in regards to the area that the city is looking at, that would encompass generally this whole block, I think possibly a few blocks to the east, but generally the multifamily area as well as the downtown and El Camino.
Can I? I think part of what this question was, was the planned development zoning district. It's just this parcel?
That's correct.
Yes.
And then the last question I have is, is that for this use, it seems to be a special use, I mean, all for senior housing, but if there's also extended care. So is there a special district zoning requirement for this type of facility, like a, you know, hospital district? Or does it require any additional special considerations for architectural design and layout for like emergency services or, you know, ambulance loading zones or any other special requirements that we foresee for this type of property? And also, is it more senior housing or is it really a hospice care that might require more of the emergency services and kind of creating sort of a, you know, hospital district or medical area?
So Sam may want to chime in and correct me here, but the proposed uses for an assistant living facility for non-ambulatory clients, the proposed use is defined in our zoning code as a state-regulated residential care facility. And that type of use is permitted as a conditional use under the zoning district. So the type of activities would be regulated through the conditional use permit process. So such as what type of seniors are accepted to facilities, you know, what are the programs for shuttling seniors around town, things of that sort. That would be governed through the conditional use permit under the current R3 zoning district.
Anything further, Commissioner Wong?
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Quip, anything at all? Ms. Cho?
Thank you. I -- just to be clear on the planned development zoning, so this is going to be specific to this parcel?
Yes.
If we do that, then what are the design -- what are the design review guidelines or what are the requirements that we're talking about? It's specific to whatever project that gets approved or does -- do we actually set up certain maximum-minimums at the same time that we do this?
So this would be a planned development specific to this site. The height, parking setbacks would all be determined for the projects, this project specifically. So there's basically what the staff would be looking at with, you know, feedback from the commissioners is looking at the context of the area, what are the heights of some of the larger buildings in the area? Is the proposed height compatible?
Get closer to the mic, Sam.
Is the proposed height compatible with the other taller buildings in the area? But that is all determined as part of the planned development district for this particular site. There's no particular guidelines other than our general plan and a downtown specific plan, which does envision higher height limits for this area. That would be the primary guidance. But basically, it's going to be specific to this site and the needs of the particular use of the senior assisted facility at this location.
If I may. I think what Commissioner Joe was alluding to, more or less, is since this is being applied as a special planned development and for a very specific use, does it set any precedence going forward, right? Anyone that comes along and seeking out a, you know, PD development, right? And then how would these setbacks, height limitations, and FAR, or the lack of there is on the FAR part of it? Does it mean that this is only -- do we set any standard for PD going forward?
The planned development would apply to the single property and if, should other properties request a planned development zoning district, they would have to meet the findings specified in the municipal code. Each request for a planned development would come with special development standards particular to that request. So for example, in this particular case, the applicant is requesting for heights up to 80 feet. That wouldn't necessarily set a precedent in the sense that an adjacent neighbor would be able to be granted in an 80-foot tall building as well. But it does set a precedent in the sense that there is -- the heights have been, you know, established for the previous development. So to answer the question, it's on a case by -- property-by-property basis and depending on the conditions of the site and the proposed development as well as the findings that could be met through the different standards, it would have to be done for each application.
Okay. And that was actually the second part of my question, so -- but I did want to know, even for this project in particular, even if we were to say a planned development, you know, PD zone would be, you know, it would -- it could possibly make sense, that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, that the project as it is or when it gets -- if it gets approved, that kind of thing would be -- that the requirements for that zoning would be specific to this, the project before us. Does that make sense? So because Mr. Feeding was mentioning that you would go back and have to look at what's compatible, what makes sense for a zoning requirement, for that zone. So I'm just curious, I'm just wondering about the process of that. So, you know, or is this all happening at once, that you do say, you know, the design review for this specific building and we're going to go ahead and say that it's okay because we put it into a PD zone? Or do you do the PD zoning first and then, do you know what I mean? Does that make sense? I'm just trying to figure in my mind, what are the requirements? Even if we were to say, okay, it has a different use, there is some, you know, flex, we want to allow for more flexibility, the requirements in terms of setbacks, in terms of parking, in terms of density, in terms of height limits, how does that get determined? Is it simply by what project we are okay with or is it set by something outside of that? Because we do, you know, our normal zoning is we set the codes first, right? And then we make sure that whatever project it is that comes before us complies with those codes. But is this a flip, is this a concurrent or reverse even situation that goes on or how does that?
So the answer is, the commission, the purpose of the study session today is to get feedback on the proposed planned development zoning district. So the commission can specify what setbacks are appropriate for this site, what heights are appropriate for this site, if the commission decides that a planned development zoning district is appropriate and it can meet the findings for a planned development rezoning. So if, for example, the commission says we, the commission is amenable to additional height, but maybe not at 80 feet, the commission could opine that for a planned development zone in this particular parcel, for example, a 60-foot height limit would be appropriate. And getting that feedback from the commission, we would work with the applicant on a design that would meet the commission's interest.
Okay, great. So that's, I mean, that's the purpose of the study session partly is, is it warranted? And if it's warranted, what are, what would be, we'd be good with in terms of the requirements?
With the PD, you could specify specific development standards.
Okay. Thank you. And I did have, because this, we did have this project in 2016, and there were some, at that time, some commission comments that were made. And so I actually asked Mr. Feeding in advance to just refresh my memory at least in terms of, you did say it was, so it was originally a 49-bed, that's getting increased. It was originally a 60-foot height building and now that's going to 85 at the height, at the highest part. What were the setbacks? Do you have that information previously?
So the previous setbacks proposed were 15-foot proposed setback for the front, where 20 feet is required plus 13 for upper floors. Side setback on the north side and south side, the proposed are five feet. Right now, the existing side setback on the north side is four foot, four and a half. And on the side setback, the south side, is nine feet. So those were the setbacks for the, this was for the first design. It was submitted back on June 5th of 2017 for the 49-bed.
And what was the lot coverage back then?
The lot coverage at that time proposed was 70%.
And the parking was?
They were proposing six parking spaces. So they have increased the parking, the 24 parking spaces, and they increased the landscaping and on the Chadbourne side.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all? Okay. Ms. Quip, do you have anything? Mr. Feeding, do you have a list of all the PD that exist in this city and in terms of all the development standard that has been granted in the past on all the PD developments? And so that we can get some sort of an educated comparison between what's being proposed in front of us and what has been approved in the past?
Staff can research that and get back with PD, with the list of PDs in the city.
That'll be helpful.
I don't have that at my fingertips, but...
Understand, yeah. But that'll be helpful.
Okay.
And, you know, what size of the lot would they be and what was the use of those lots, right? And how does that compare? I mean, obviously, some of these standards have changed over time, you know, some of those older developments. And I do understand, you know, Director Roscoe, you said something about, you know, we're seeking more heights and more density as we go forward here, so. But having some baseline comparison would be a good idea as well. And also, has a shadow study been done on this project before?
No, there has not been a shadow study done. The project has completed a historic study, and there was also a traffic study that was completed. The... The historic study did not find any significant historic impacts on the, on the demolition of the existing single-family and apartment complex or apartment dwelling. And the traffic study found that the TDM measures, the transportation demand management measures that would be applied to the project would reduce traffic congestion and, to lessen significant impact, as well as the parking would not be a significant impact. The, the project again is for primarily non-ambulatory seniors, so they would not be driving. However, the applicant has increased the parking so that there's available parking for staff and, and visitors. And the site is also located very close to Millbury-Bart Station and public transit along El Camino Rail.
I mean, given how tall the proposal currently is, how, in the proximity of this particular proposal to some of the other much shorter, smaller residential buildings, having a defined shadow fan that you think it might be applied to this vicinity of this proposal?
Oh, right. About the shadows, yes. So I, I did, staff received today, sort of last minute, some, some neighbors had some concerns about, especially the, the owner of the single-family home that's on Broadway, adjacent to the site, about the potential impact of shadows. And that's something that, you know, commissioners or staff can request a shadow study to look at that and look at those impacts based on this design. So yes, that's, that's something that, that's staff can look at.
All right. Any other question? Hang on one second. Anything else from anybody else before I bring, you have something? Okay. Vice Chair Quip?
Yes. It looks like the traffic study that was done, was done based on the smaller building?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. The, the applicant will be required to do an updated traffic study based on the current design. So that's something that staff has informed the applicant about. This project also would be required to go through environmental review.
And SEQA?
Yes, SEQA for this project. That's an additional study that's required for this project.
How many categories and what sort of categories are being required in the SEQA for this project to be reviewed upon?
Well, this project, it'll undergo an initial study to determine what type of environmental document it may need. There, there may be some mitigation measures, some impacts that require mitigation. I'm envisioning like the transportation demand management plan. So it, it may be what's called a SEQA mitigated negative declaration document. That's a document that requires some mitigation to reduce the impacts. But until we do the initial study to look at all of the different SEQA elements, we won't know exactly what type of document it will be. The initial study will make that determination.
Yeah. And also, has a soil report been produced for this project yet?
No.
Okay. So that would probably be a good idea. I think it's doing a two-story excavation.
Yes, there, there is going to be a lower level, like below-ground level for the parking.
So if the building was smaller, would it still be required to have a SEQA?
By smaller, you mean lower in height or lower in density?
Even smaller than what we had looked at previously.
Again, I think we would look at, you know, doing an initial study to see what the potential impacts would be. If, what, what they're requesting is a planned development district, so they're, they are asking for some flexibility to allow some increased heights and, you know, the, reducing the setbacks and the parking requirements. So those are, you know, potential SEQA environmental impacts that would need to be evaluated.
Thank you.
If it's smaller, so if it's smaller, say, lower height, you know, 60, 65 feet in height instead of 80 feet, again, I still think that, you know, what we would need, we would do, recommend an initial study, SEQA, to evaluate, you know, as Commissioner Chair Feng mentioned, the solar shadow impacts, traffic study, updated traffic study to look at potential, look at the traffic and any potential traffic impacts. But I think even with a reduced, the, the reduced height and the density, the, given the location and that it's near public transit and that most of the seniors would be non-ambulatory, there, the, the results of a traffic study will be similar in that there won't be anticipated significant parking or transportation impacts.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that brings up another question. You have a lot of seniors that are non-ambulatory. However, there might be an extra stress on the area because of needing extra equipment, back to the hospital, you know, for that kind of stuff.
Emergency access?
Yeah. Of the access and...
I think we...
I mean, they'll probably be calling 911, probably more.
Yeah, those are good questions. I think we, we have the applicant and the, the property owner who manages existing senior facilities.
Yeah.
I think she would be able to answer that question.
So before we bring on the applicant, before we bring on the applicant and the architect, does anybody else have any questions for staff at the moment? Yeah? Okay. Can we have the applicant, please? Thank you, Mr. Fielding.
I'm Stan Panko, architect. Staff here has done such a great job in explaining everything. I think I'll just stand here and answer any questions you might have and kind of fill in the spots where you may have some further questions and we can go from there.
Okay.
I got involved here somewhat late in terms of bringing this, the character of this building into what Millbury is all about, which is the Mission Spanish Style. And I feel very good that I think we've accomplished just that, to fit well in with Being tall here like that building, I'm having a hard time getting up to this microphone. But I believe we've accomplished something rather unique that Millbury will be very proud of.
So before any other commissioner speaks, if you don't mind, Mr. Panko, give us your vision of this building and what you bring to our city with this design. How do you envision this building fits into the overall paradigm of how this block would look like? I mean, it is a pretty tall building, as you can see. I would like to understand your vision behind this design here.
I'm also the architect for, or the architect of record for Bellamore. So this is an extension of that, but more in the traditional sense that even Bellamore was. Bellamore being closer to the commercial El Camino district, this being further up on the hill. I felt it really needed more of the traditional feel of Millbury. And height, yes, but we softened the, the parts to it, so it's not just a big block that you often see in, in this, in other cities. I think it's got a lot of character and it should fit in well. Part of the reason for the additional height is we have a pretty small piece of land and you need to accomplish so many beds for a, a facility like this to be successful and not be here today and gone tomorrow. And then what you're going to do with this building? Yes, you don't want to hear that it's part of economics, but it honestly is. So I think we've done a lot here in accomplishing that. We have two entrances, one from Broadway, one from Chadbourne. If there's ambulance needs, we have the driveway on the Broadway side where an ambulance can come in, pick up somebody at that point. So being that it's on the corner actually gives some good flexibility.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Panko? Commissioner Wong?
Yes. Referring to the questions that we were raising in the discussion we had earlier about special needs or services for the residents of this building and the special care that may be provided, can you talk a little bit about any additional special features that you foresee in terms of just providing emergency services or the need for, if there's any special drop-off area zones or emergency services, parking?
Well, the people that are, that are living here are pretty much, I want to say self-contained within this building. You will have guests, families coming to visit them. Being that we have two entrances, I think that really helps lessen any of the impacts that you might have from one entrance. We've got both the Broadway and Chadbourne, as I mentioned. The rooftop garden, I think, offers good recreational possibilities for those that live there. They don't need to get out on the street to get any sunshine or air. Plus the activities that's provided with that facility, I think, is really good. Parking-wise, we've got two levels, 24 cars, which I really believe that it's more than enough for the type of building that it is, being that the occupants are not going to have cars, they're not going to be driving. Families will come and pick them up to take them in to lunch and things like that for the family get-togethers, either there or in their own homes, makes it compatible. Does that help answer your concern there?
It lets us know where you're at with these projects. And then, you know, in this initial phases of the planning, this facility, it really has a different, you know, use or type of building than the neighboring properties. I'm just wondering for this, this size of a project, has there been extensive planning studies done, done in terms of just the soil stability and the constructability to make sure that if we're digging down, we're going two floors down below the street, is it? That there'll be adequate safety measures and stability for neighboring properties during construction, excavation?
Initial tests have been done, but not to the extent that we need to as we go further ahead. All of that still needs to be completed, but additional investigations have shown that there is sufficient soil stability. You're, you're not down on the flat where you've got bay mud to deal with, you're up there on the hill. We're not near an earthquake zone, so it's pretty stable.
Did you expect this to be a type 1 construction?
Yes.
Complete, complete type 1 construction?
Yes. Now, we will be, there are new exceptions coming into the code, so we will be using some of those. I can't really tell you in detail exactly what they are, but essentially, it's going to be type 1 fire sprinkler building. The balconies that you see are strictly decoration, nobody's going to go out on them.
Can you describe the units? I mean, they're, they're, they're called studios, singles, and one bedrooms, but they all look like studio or...
I know.
...o-bedroom. So what, what is the difference between these three styles?
That would really be a better question for Alice to answer, since she has really gotten into, to that aspect of it much more than I have.
Hello, Commissars and all staff.
Let's get closer to the mic.
Also, the audience, thank you for all your time come to listen to our process. I just wanted to say, I have a dream, and because this building is going to have about 4,000 roof garden, it's very beautiful and have a view. Just imagine when you're going to retirement and lost your independence, you're still able to have something you can go into the childhood to play in the roof. It's very wonderful, my dream is safety, you don't need to worry about traffic, but you have about 4,000 square feet in the roof and facing the wheel. And the second dream of mine is when I lost my independence, I still can, seeing the people pass by, I still can say hello, good morning. And my dream is I can go to buy flowers and have my senior, to give him, anyone pass by, keep walking to the bus station or keep walking to downtown to walk. I can read, hello, good morning, can I give you a flower? That's what my residents do in house. So I thought, that's wonderful, that's what I really to have my retirement time when I even lost my independence, cognitively or physically. And the second, my house, I live in 1086 Clea Field, and existing owner, they moved to assisted living. And my left side of my house, my right side of my house, down to two, size two, are moving out from Millbury because they lose their independence and they don't have adequate of bed for them to choosing living here. I thought all our audience consider Millbury is our hometowns. We don't want to moving out when we're losing our independence. That's what I really willing to serving our community and provide a better quality of life when we losing our independence. Why I would keep saying lose of our independence? Because assisted living is not provide service for all, any of people here. Assisting of activity of daily living, that mean bathing, dressing, tidying, transferring in continent, and also ambulatory. Well, another hand is cognitively, even though we can do all those activity, but we are not able to management our daily living. They forget eating, they forget drinking, or, you know, a lot of cognitive issue. Those people need 24-hour, seven days supervision or staying assistance. By current, even Millbury, I saw staff do a wonderful job to do the budget description. It's a lot of detail, even include Millbury, current, our population. Our population is about 30% of people under a senior age, like 65 to 84. And currently, we are not enough those facilities to serving our people in the, living in the facility, in, in Millbury City. And also, by the first initial application, we also require for 98 bed, even though for 4'4" or 5'4" or 6'4" until current, our application for 7'4". The reason, because after I have another building was just complete and practiced, now is more than a year already, and then I find a lot of requirement, such as people maintain their standard for living. Of course, by the state licensing, as long as the room have a window, a cubicle fee of storage, one stand, one night, and can be calling as a room. And any room can able to fit two bed, then you can have two people occupied with one bedroom. But that's not what our Millbury's living standard. That's why I trying to invest more money to maintain the higher quality of a building. If you look at the buildings, the first four facing Broadway have a large lobby, that's for activity for a senior, that's what I say, I can stand out and seeing people pass by in downtown and say hello, that's wonderful life. And also, in all the four facing the ocean, we have a large community room, that's also I provide people... I provide people when they come in to visit, when they have cognitively wandering, we have some place for them to come down. Also, you facing this size four, we also have a large community room, so people can have a book to reading, they can have coffee, they can have a lot of activity without, when other people agitate, and also fighting, and also for their safety. So, the whole purpose for this building, and it quite for us, consider as a development plan, because I want our Millbury cities have a wonderful, can be our current and the future living standard, for who has been work hard for the lifetime, and when they're getting older, lost their independence, we still have a wonderful place for their comfortable quality life, that's what all I want. And many of you have been visit my side, including our officer of a planning department, you can all see what kind of service, what kind of staff we have. And we are, I, all the same is that because Millbury is my hometown, I just want to have a wonderful, wonderful, and senior space, let them to feel it's my home for my life. That's why, and earlier they mentioned about assisted living, is considered residential care facility, that mean it's their home, even though they lost their independence. Another hand is regarding for the ambulance, I can give you one example. Currently, in the new building, the 6'4" in downtown San Francisco, downtown Oakland, we operating over a year already, we only call one time ambulance, only one time. You can check the record. And in the another side facility, and we are being operating over almost 11 years now, our retention ratio was very, very high. The reason is, anyone can have some day, right, and, you know, walk through all our life, but that's some days, not every days. And also, we want to provide a quality of life. How many times, when I doing the assessment, I need to send those individual from home to emergency, because from home, a lot of individual, they lay off, you know, the concept of safety, so they are dehydration, they are falling, and also, they have a UTI and common hygiene issues. So, but when you have a professional service, those people will under all the costs, you know, observing for any condition change, we also doing central medication management, so we offer them, you know, medication as what the doctors prescribe us, communicate with the doctor, communicate with the family. That's why, for the emergency reason, maybe much less than who, if those number of people living in Millbury, that will be under our service, will much less than they living in the building. Another hand, we have been operating the facility in only 11 years, all year long, the total number of people fall, when they bring their loved one outside and get injured, the total number is higher than, we have average about 60 senior in my building, 70, 7 days, 24 hours, the total number. Even they occasionally, very seldomly to bring their one out, they get injured, the total number is higher than inside the facility. So, that's all I want to share with you, I would like all of you support the plan, and I really, that's one of the dream, I believe that will be, have one of the landmark building of our seniors, and also for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong. Did it answer your question?
So, I do have some questions.
Yes.
Back to the design of the rooms, they're called three different things, studios, singles, and one bedrooms. What's the difference between them?
Okay, it's also after I risk any upper decide of the kind, this kind of surface, so once, one bedroom, that mean they have a living room, also have a bedroom. And the studio, they don't have bedroom or living room, they only have a one bedroom. But those studio, they also can have a leave, some kind of, not a kitchen, but they have something they can play with, they have a microwave, all those, I was saying, and something inside their unit, that's studio.
Then what's a single?
Single, I believe the single does, even doesn't have the microwave, all those area, that's kind of the single room.
And you're anticipating just one resident per room?
Good question, very, very good question. As I say, like, currently, based on this current plan, they have a room for 83, but why my application was seeing 98 bed, the reason is, under state license regulations, every room, you may place maximum two bed inside one bedroom. But another hand, even though I have 83 room, based on my current application, conditional use permit from the city, I may maximum able to have 98 seniors living as, under our license, that's what they mean.
And we understand economics, that, you know, you have to have enough beds to make it work, but why did it increase from 49, I think it was in the past, to 83? What happened in the last two years that made you up it?
Thank you. 49, that was the room, but initially, until now, we still apply for 98 bed, that's still the term under the state license regulation. Very good questions, and also, as our resident in Millbury, I has been, you know, facing all those years, our city and state of California, a lot of things changed. And also, as earlier, the other question about our downtown, new, called specific plan, right? So, I've been waiting and seeing what's going on, because for this building, as I said earlier, I wish I can have a very best look environment for our future residents when they lose their independence. But in order to have a better quality of space for them to live, of course, I want everything was bigger and better, more activity room, that's why I need to increase the size of the building and the height of the building. Another hand is, if you, instead of lot people share their bedroom, you may not want, I may not want to share bedroom with others, right? So, that's why I increase the bed, not the, I increase the room from 48 room to 83 bed, to 83 room, that's why.
And one more question, what's the potential economic impact to the city of Millbury?
Very good question. First of all, as what I sense, like, when I getting old, I even I view the wheelchair from the side, we can wheel to downtown to get my lunch. And also, people come to visit their loved one, majority, people will say, hey, do you want to go out with me? So, also can increase our city tax income by bringing more people to come to visit their loved one. Also, as our Millbury, you know, residency, we also can provide more people potentially to get the local job, not that they travel away from home. There's so many benefit for our city too.
What about the facility itself?
The facility itself, honestly, I'm not financial people, I haven't done the financial impact study, but honestly, I always say, I have too many friends here, and very successful in business, but none of them following me to try to operating assisted living. First of all, you need a lot of professional knowledge, and second, you have a passion, and also love, and you do need to work hard, 24 hours, 7, that's me too. Another hand is, even now, the first building I operating, we even not able to break even, not include me, my husband's income, the income in first five years. The second building now, I still very slowly to grow, because I want to play safe. So, for this one, even why I do all the study, even I have done the shuttle study, I've done the shuttle study, but haven't done the financial study. The reason is, because once I pay myself the good work and good heart, something will come in the future, but I haven't done detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I wish you the best of luck in your plans.
Thank you.
I see that with this lot, I would consider it an odd, irregular-shaped lot, because it has an L shape.
Yes.
And to be clear, you don't own that other piece of property that's surrounding?
Yes, I do.
You do own that, so?
I do own, but in me in the 75 Broadway, right?
Okay, so you own the two properties that together would make a rectangle?
Because the one parcel.
So, I guess my question then is, is what considerations have you made towards just developing this entire rectangular property, rather than developing an L-shaped building that's a little bit more odd geometry, and that may limit the size of your construction and the size of your footprint?
I wish I can, but I cannot, because I've been poaching them, but they wasn't really willing to release that parcel, so I'm not able to do that at this time. Another hand, regarding for the shuttle study, we did do the shuttle study, but was not current height. And another hand is, because this building is facing the east over there, so when the sunrise, and that is from this side, like, the 75 Broadway may not have any problem with the shadow. And another hand, when the sun, you know, sunset is from that side, and of course, even like current building will be the same side, because they have, here is our building, and also, this is Chambon. So, for the, for the distance, and for the, for the sun, you know, sunset is not able to affect the building on Broadway, the smaller house. And also, by the design of our property, and only possibly can have, like, have a window to see the backyard, will be the, only the first floor, which is on Chambon, and that will be the kitchen. I've been also really sincerely considering for the privacy of my neighbor, so the window is not like this lower window, it's a high window. So, even the people in that four is not able to see my external backyard, because the window is not like this level, it's like this level. So, we are not, we are not able to see our neighbors backyard.
So, clarification for the staff, was that other lot, that, that in total rectangular properties, the two properties together, was that calculated in the coverage for the lot coverage, the 75% square foot?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yes.
I think we're confused, there's only one parcel, and it's L-shaped. The small house to the south of it is a separate parcel owned by somebody else. Is that what you were asking before? There's, just her parcel is an L-shaped?
Yes, so the applicant's parcel is an L-shaped.
It's private property.
Yeah, the property adjacent to the south, a single-family home, is a separate lot, separate property.
And also, my last comment to our commissioner, and also from our audience, at this point, we have been wait many, many years, and also, basically, I as a resident, allowing our planning department, also our commissioner or council, have been trying to modify the downtown development zoning and planning. But this building, once it's built, and should be benefit for next of 100 years, and I've been wait for too long to wait for the zoning change. That's why I wish we can get expedite to considering for us, this parcel as a development plan. That will be a good example to push things, you know, forward. Otherwise, we'll wait until two years without seeing anything, and really working and benefit for the community, for the development. That's all I want to say it. Thank you.
Any other commissioner have questions for the applicant in a moment?
Can I, of the architect, can I?
Yes, Mr. Panko. Questions in a moment, because I think we have another 13 speakers who want to speak.
Just question, you mentioned multiple times that there's access from both, both streets, Chadbourne and Broadway. You're not referring to the garage, though, right?
The garage is an access, yes, then there's an entrance right next to it, and then up on?
So, access to the garage is off of Broadway?
Correct.
Is there access to the garage from Chadbourne?
No.
No, okay.
Single vehicular access.
Yes, there's, actually, the main entrance is for guests and for staff and public, is most likely from Chadbourne, that goes into the administration area of the facility.
I'm sorry, I'm not referring to access in terms of pedestrian traffic coming in and out. I'm strictly asking about traffic or circulation, so the garage itself, right, so the garage itself, with the cars coming in and out, and ambulances, it sounds like you hopefully won't need it too much, but still, ambulances, evacuation, if ever necessary, you know, hopefully, again, never necessary, but, you know, those, those things, at this point, there is only the one garage access.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Second, does the applicant want to? Ms. Kwong, you want to answer that question?
Thank you, sorry. Based on what, obviously, decide why we decide have two entrances, because Broadway is more traffic, and a lot of senior, they are wandering. That's why I don't want the large dining area, and they have restaurants, can easy to exit to the traffic times for safety reason. And the second, based on what I learned in the past practice, a lot of family come, they don't drive, they would just come with the public transportation. So, those, we don't need to go to the garage, and they, they can go to the entry, not that then come from, go into garage and come up to reach their loved one, that's why we have two entry. The Broadway entry, because again, it's lot of traffic, so even though I have a lobby there, but that will consider for activity, major use. We would really drive to visit, then from, that will be from the garage, otherwise, they were entering from the Chambon side, not that then, that's why even Stanley has a very good design, even we have for the disability, and is from the side, not that than from, directly from the Chambon, that's for the safety reasons. Also, for the ambulance, you know, we have two, a different way to call for the ambulance, also, you call line emergency ambulance, also call 911. Majority seniors under this age, our both building average age is 90, and they have all the post form sign, and if someone lost their conscience, do we do CPR? But if someone, they've been sign, they are not going to do any CPR, once they lost the conscience. And also, we are seeing people by time for any other science symptoms, and their life expectancy may shorter, but possibly within six months, even under current all the insurance, under all the healthcare professional, we're always poaching the family, and sign for hospice, that's why. Those people, they don't even, not need to call 911, not, no more ambulance, we only call the hospital come and certify.
Thank you, and if I can ask the architect again, so, again, the only access for cars at this point is on Broadway, that width is 14 feet, less than 14 feet, I think?
That's approximately.
Clarify?
Correct.
So, it's basically one car usually going in and out at a time?
Yes.
Okay, okay. 12-feet garage door, thank you, because I noticed the, oh, the width that was on here was 14, but I didn't know how much the actual garage door is, so 12-feet wide garage door, basically one car going, going in or out at any one time?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Quip?
To piggyback on that, if one car goes in, is there enough, I mean, I didn't do all the calculations, and I'm sure they would be done at some point, is there a big turn all the calculations and I'm sure they would be done at some point, is there a big turnaround area for people come back out, or do they have to back back out?
No, there would, people that are going to be coming in are going to have a place to park. And that'll be controlled by an attendant that's going to be on that floor to help with the, the lifts and the mechanical parts of it. So when a car comes in, there's going to be a place for that car to park, whether it be on the lower level or on the main level. So it'll go in and park in that empty space and then back out when it wants to leave and go. Now, if there's another car waiting to get out, well, obviously one of them's going to have to park first and then the other one leave. But we're only dealing with just a few cars and not a condition where you've got a lot of people coming at once and leaving at once. So I feel it's a manageable...
Safety issue. I mean, if everything goes well, that's a perfect scenario.
Well, sure, and, and you need a traffic control person to be able to manage that.
Because if somebody is in there with a 911, and I, you know, I used to take care of a gentleman at Green Hills, and I couldn't believe how many 911 calls there were. It was constant every day. So if one of them are in there, you can't get in or out, right? Because that's how they're...
That is, yes, that, that could very well be, as a possibility.
And, and, well, you're going to do a parking study because Broadway's a pretty busy street, so...
Yes.
And, and when the lifts are up, what is the safety on, on getting those cars out or, or people getting out?
They're used, lifts now are used in parking garages everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
And they've got a lot of those details worked out. I'm not an expert in any of that. I'd rely on a consultant to work with us to get those details pinned down, but I don't see it as an issue. A few years ago, when, when those lifts were pretty new, I had a lot of those same concerns. But today, I think most of them have been satisfied, but I can't tell you the details right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Sorry, just one, one more, please.
Ms. Joe.
So the sidewalks, what are the widths of these sidewalks right here at, at this area? Do you...
I don't recall.
I don't have a ruler, but...
I think it shows on the survey.
Yeah, I don't have a, sorry, commissioner, I know, they, they seem small to me, so that's why I'm just kind of trying to figure out what, because we're looking at a zero, almost a zero setback, so...
Five foot.
Five foot, on both sides, Broadway and Chadborn?
Chabon's a little wider.
Yeah, Chaborn's wider, but I...
A little bit more.
We also want to take as much for landscaping as we can also. It would be nice to have wider than five feet, I agree.
Six and seven on Chabon, I would say, based on this.
Thank you. So between six and seven on Chaborn, and we're looking at a one-to-three-foot setback with the landscaping?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions from anybody else? Mr. Panko, if you can stay? Can you stay? Mr. Panko, can you please stay? So, what is your expectation in terms of public utility upgrade and requirements on this particular site? Now, given the fact that this has always been sort of a residential zone, right? Water, sewer, power, gas, all those things would be, the expectation in the past, and the infrastructure is already in place, are more than likely to be for residential use. Now, this is going to increase the occupancy by quite a bit.
Yes.
Right? Do you have an expectation on those?
We haven't studied that, to be honest.
Okay.
We know that there will be upgrades, just from what you're saying now, it has to be, because they are single-family duplexes and residences and apartments there, so...
Right.
This is going to be an increased demand, both in sewer, as you said, gas, water, and that goes with the project.
I think it'll be important for us to have an understanding of that, some sort of an expectation.
At, at some point, yes.
Oh, we need to know...
That'll come, I believe, in the environmental study.
But that's more of a utility rather than environmental. I mean, just want to make sure that we have a sufficient expectation in terms of those upgrades, so that it would not impact all the other residents while this development goes on.
Of course.
Do you have an, maybe this is for the applicant as well, do you have, do you know how many employees are you expecting at that location?
I think, I think Ms. Kwong can answer that better.
Yes, I was referring to the applicant. But if you can stay, Mr. Panko, I would appreciate it.
Thank you for very good questions. By state license declaration, we don't have a specific racial requirement, it's all based on the care needs. But generally speaking, like currently, we have about 60 residents who are living in this building and being operating over 11 years. And daily, we have about 12 to 14 staff at night.
14 staff?
12. Yeah, at the same, at the daytime.
Right.
In the nighttime, we have two away staff.
Two away staff?
That means they don't sleep.
Two awake staff?
Yes.
Excuse me, so two, two staff that is on duty?
Yeah, at night.
At night, okay. And then that's for how many residents?
Average, about 60.
60 residents, with this would be a little bit more, wouldn't it?
Yes, so that is, for example, if full...
Is that 98 beds?
We apply for 98 bed, if full occupancy.
Right.
Generally speaking, like we have about 20 plus or minus based on the condition in the daytime.
Up to 20 staff?
I believe so, if full occupancy.
So, and what about night shift?
Night shift, like for example, now have six-four building, and first two fours, like the six-four, the fifth four were deciding for someone cognitively able to alternate. So those people, we don't need staff in those two fours. And the third four and the fourth four is those people may cognitively impairment, so each four have one night shift staff. And the third, and the second four, people need more hand-on assistance, so that may have another one staff at nights. And also for safety, like you may still add another staff to helping each four. So totally possibly at nights, based on the current building, if we full occupy, that will be about four staff at nights.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that your staff requirement are likely to be between four to 20?
Not the same time.
I understand, but between four to 20, number of, at any given time?
If, no, if seven days total, maybe about 30.
No, what I'm saying is the, the number of staffs in the building at any given time is between four to 20?
Hmm, may or may not be.
At night is four, daytime is 20, right?
Possibly be.
Yeah.
May not be, it depends on the condition, yes.
What I'm seeing is that the amount of parking, as you dedicated as a lower basement, you have 16 staff parking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so just be mindful about that, right, so that you understand the staff and the parking ratio that you need, because we don't want to be increasing the parking burden on...
You're right.
On the off-street parking, so something to keep in mind, right, when you calculate the staff and parking ratio, okay?
Another hand is even our staff, planning department have been visit, our visiting to facility last week, and they do see how occupy, how weakened of our garage. The building will have more than 8,000 square feet.
Right.
But only how many car you see.
We do understand that parking is not necessarily always a one-to-one ratio, right? Just something to keep in mind, that, you know, you have an expectation of certain amount of staff that you need, and sometimes it's not just your staff, but as well as supporting personnel, visitors and all the others, right? Because after calculating this 20 staff that you think you are going to have on the upper basement, that leaves you eight parking space, including the accessible parking.
We have 24 parking space plus the 16 bicycle lot.
I understand, so you have 16 on the lower basement?
I cannot tell you where, but it's the total number I can remember.
I'm reading, excuse me, I'm reading the plan, you got, you got 16 in the lower basement and then eight on the first basement, upper basement, as Mr. Panko calls it. So the 16, you drew, you drew it on the plan, says staff parking, lower basement, 16 staff parking down below. And then you have eight on the, sort of a street-level access, right? Where you have eight parking, including one of which is accessible parking. And that would have to encompass all the visitors as well as, you know, daytime and nighttime delivery, personnel and emergency access.
Not true.
Okay.
First of all, we have disability parking, and also once you get into emergency, really emergency issue, they may not get to the garage, because that is emergency. They will step by, stay outside for a couple minutes and then they left. And a second, we, on the staff report, we've been mentioned, we're going to give an incentive for the staff and encourage them to not driving, then come to, with the common transportation. And typically, for this kind of class of working employee, often they owning the car is very expensive. That's why in my facility, currently, my staff detention, retention number is very, very high when I did the interview. I also want to know how comfortably, how safely they come to work. That's why even after now 11 years, I never fire any staff, because they do feel a loyalty to work and they feel comfortable to work in the place. They have been working committed, take care of senior for over 10 years. Another hand of those people come to visit, and because their loved ones average is 90, their family member, the children is about 70 plus or minus, and have been submit to the planning department in the past 2005, 2000, no, 2015, 2014, 15 and 16, all the signature listing lot, how often they come. And all is original signature paper submitted to the department, and they can certify and verify based on what I say is true statement, and for a certain living, they are not coming like every day, they may be come once a month. That's all the, you know, the frequency they come to visit.
Okay. Another thing is for staff, I think we certainly would need a parking, give me back up. Within the parking space that they do have, we need to understand how are they going to turn around and come back out facing forward to Broadway? Something to think about is that Broadway's by itself is already BC Street. Secondary, vast majority of the traffic that has been in the past is all residential based, this would be somewhat of a commercial space, commercial nature, commercial in nature in terms of number of access and how often it gets access. You're likely to get delivery trucks, you're likely to have visitors, and you're likely to have emergency access, quite often of them. So having forward-facing access when it came in and out of the garage would be essential. I don't know how the commissioner feel about it, but I think that'll be an important piece, right? Instead of having ambulance backing up into Broadway, for example, or delivery truck for that matter. So that would be something that I think the staff need to pay attention to on the secondary review. Mr. Panko, you have a comment you want to make?
Yes, we can easily add additional stack parking.
Yes.
On the lower level.
Yes.
And on that upper level, just take one space out and make that a turnaround.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure that, you know...
I totally understand, yes.
Make sure that, you know, forward-facing traffic coming in and out of that driveway will be important. Yeah, okay.
That just kind of brought up another question. I see that the trash enclosures, and I'm thinking, is that entrance, it does say overhead door, is it wide enough for a trash truck?
No, they're going to have to have carts and bring those carts out for the trucks, or the trucks gonna have, the person on the truck's gonna have to come in and pick up that cart and pull it out.
So there'd be garbage cans instead of dumpsters?
No, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a dumpster.
Dumpsters?
Yeah.
And, and that size entrance would allow for that? And then that means, is there enough space? I mean, that's a long way. That means the truck is going to be in front of that driveway or right around, the frontage isn't very big, that's not going to park other than in the front. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, staff will need to take a look at the infrastructure that is exist on the, on the lot and on along Broadway and Chadborn, and to sort of have, you know, work with Mr. Panko in terms of the requirements of those infrastructure upgrade, if any.
I have one more question.
You have one more? Okay. Ms. Quip?
I know, the more we start talking about it, the more all these things come to your brain. I know Ms. Kwong is, is very good about managing her people because she's had the business for 10 years, but this building is five stories of non-ambulatory people. So that is a lot different than having two stories or three stories where everybody... So what happens here is if there's an issue on one floor, say on floor two, how much time is it going to take for those people to get to four? So I, I mean, I'm just...
No, those are good questions, but also understand that there's regulatory people here that, that are going to be really looking at that.
Right, but saying she's going to have four night employees, and they're going to have to, it's different than everything on one floor, at least to me, it would seem much easier to have a lot of people on one floor than having, I mean, you're going to need, I don't know, they're non-ambulatory, I would tend to think they need a lot more.
Okay. First of all, thank you for your questions, it's a good question, so everyone can have a certain living 101, minimum knowledge. For people call for non-ambulatory, that mean for any other issue, they are not able to go out by themselves without assisting, without assist, assistance, that's called non-ambulatory. Doesn't mean their back burn, doesn't mean they're not able to walk. It's cognitively, they're not able to go out the door by themselves without assistance, that's called non-ambulatory. Okay, now, as what I earlier described, with the current, I have six-four building and the fifth four and a sixth four in the, because we, me and also we have other staff to doing assessment. We do base on the diagnosis cognitively, if they are able to alternate, or physically, if they able to safely to go to bathroom by themselves a lot. So those people, we may not need people around all the time, so we don't need a staff around there. And also when the daytime beside they are taking nap or they're sick, otherwise they all go to the community, common area for the activities, interactions. And the second, as like you say, for the how many staffing, and of course, at night, at night, we have some four, like what I said, in the first four, why the first four still have a room there, because those four is a condom in the future, possibly someone physically or cognitively conditioned, not that well. So those people maybe have two staff there, but some other, some other, you know, four may not need one stay there, as what I, when I was working in acute hospital, we to go to check people at night, we to using the flashlight to see if their eye have the action, if they, that mean they are still alive for, you know, brain injury. But for seniors, as what I teaching my staff, how you check for all rooms at night? You don't need to wait them up, so to open the door first, you see any, any foot on the floor, any person in the floor, that mean they fall, right? mean they fall, right? But otherwise, everything is okay, nothing on the floor, check and the blanket. Even you can see the blanket is moving, they make everything's fine. That's how we take care of them at night. And people, majorities who have incontinent, then we to assist them to changing or go to the bathroom. That's all we need at night.
I'm sorry, Chairman Fang, if, we have a lot of people here. And we're kind of getting into issues beyond design review and...
I understand. Just, I think this is just sort of want to limit it to the questions for the applicant.
Right. So as a suggestion, maybe can we go to public hearing?
We should. Anybody have any questions for the applicant at the moment?
If, just because, I mean, and maybe even as we go to public hearing, public hearing or public comment, sorry, to ask maybe for the older residents and anybody who has disabilities to have a little bit of precedent, just, I mean, to be able to have some priority so that they can go home, because we're almost hitting nine o'clock, so.
Right.
I don't know how we would do that, just a thought, putting it out there.
I understand. Well, obviously from, I mean, I got 13 speaker slips tonight. And obviously, I couldn't tell which one has need of going home earlier by looking at this piece of paper.
Just go down the list.
And I was just go down the list.
Or maybe ask if anybody here really needs to go sooner? No?
Okay, all right. So in the interest of being fairness, I just, yeah. That's 14.
Oh, it's better than 13.
Can we limit to two minutes? Because if we go three minutes, that's an hour almost.
Can we set the clock to two minutes for each speaker, please? First speaker of the night, Stephen Green. Two minutes, please. Thank you.
Members of the Planning Commission, I just wanted to express my support for this project. I know as a person facing the housing crisis myself, I can only imagine how hard it must be on a fixed income. Seniors especially also face the housing crisis that my generation does. And I urge you to act to move this project forward. It's in a great location, you know, less than a mile to the Mills Peninsula Hospital, close to Bart, so family members can come visit, and close to the grocery store. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Chris Huang, Sheng, excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Sheng. I own the house at 75 Broadway. So on your map, that's the tiny little, tiny little house. Before I make my comments, I just want to kind of set the lenses by which I see this issue. So there's three things. One is as a homeowner, and now that property is a rental property, so now that's as a landlord. Two, from a perspective of someone who works in law enforcement for the past 30 years, I can speak to safety issues. And three, just as in my work where we live now, I'm a commissioner on a commission where we deal with the needs of the seniors and of housing issues. So I'll stipulate, I am fully supportive of pro-development for senior issues. And I know if this is anything like the study session from a couple of years ago, you're going to hear a lot of arguments and comments made on behalf of why a senior care facility is needed. I get it, and I'll even stipulate to that. My issue here is the size and the just overbearing, and I think the safety issues that come up. So let me just get into that because I know we're short on time. Privacy of my tenants is a big deal. And this, because it's an L-shaped lot, we're not dealing with one, but two sides of seven stories of floors that can look into the windows and backyard of that property. That's going to cause a significant issue for what I can rent it for, even if I can rent it. Also, the imposing height, the shadow, I don't think it affects just my house. I think it affects the neighbors across the street, neighbors to the side as well. Under the current rules, there would be no setback, like zero feet, all right? And at least that's how I interpreted the plans. Speaking to the garage, and this is where my law enforcement hat would come on, I think we've all been to San Francisco where you park in the tiny parking garage, where you're literally turning from one street in the financial district right into the garage. Those are one-way ramps. So we have to envision that with a very short setback, if nothing. And you get to that point, the only way you do that safely with the number of pedestrians, and especially the number of increased elderly and senior folks, is some sort of lighting, flashing signal, and then an audible buzz, and you've heard those in the financial district. That's going to cause an issue as well. To me, the planned development zone is a loophole around the overall spirit of what the general plan and the downtown plan is. The timing doesn't work out, I get it. But at the same time, it's, it really is disturbing where, two years ago, under one set of rules, it didn't work out, and I think the commission at that time, we all have already heard, respectfully said, please come back with something more scaled down. Now we hear something that's doubled almost in size under a kind of a loophole. And, you know, with all due respect to the applicant, you know, a senior care facility that has one ambulance, recall, time's up, okay, is troubling. I think realistically, from a police standpoint, I'll tell you, any medical response will have an ambulance, a square ambulance, a fire truck, and potentially a police car. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sheng. Yvonne Sheng? Two minutes, please.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Good evening. I also own the property at 75 Broadway, and I grew up in Millbrae. I went to Spring Valley, Taylor Middle School, Mills High School. We still come back for the great restaurants. And when we bought this house, it was the only single-family house on the block. We were excited about the possibility of developing it, and we actually looked into it, but the parking requirements were too costly. Like, we didn't have, you know, the funds to go underground and do all that. I understand the need for housing, and I understand the need for senior housing. My parents are in their 80s, and we're looking for some, you know, options for them. But I don't think that this is the right place for a hospice situation where you have people dying next door to our property. I mean, it's just, it's very different to have, for example, my, with my grandmother, she wasn't a senior home. It's a great place. They're, you know, able to have activities. And, but when she moved to hospice, she went by ambulance. And she is really a not, not a good feeling in that area. And with all the apartments and residences in that area, I just feel that it's not the right place for that kind of use. And I see I'm out of time, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Ms. Sheng. Mr. Nick Coronelis, excuse me, Coronelis, sorry.
My name's Nick Coromelis. I'm a resident in Millbrae. I'm a business owner in Millbrae. And we also own the 12-unit apartment building across the street from this proposed project. And I think that this is just going to severely impact the quality of life in the neighborhood. The project's overbearing. It's extremely disproportionate. They've mentioned heights and widths and all kinds of numbers. The heights that have thrown out there of buildings are not on Broadway. There's no broad, there's no building on Broadway that's more than two stories. Even the Bellamore, that's a whole square block, only is two and a half stories. One of those stories is semi-subterranean. The Magnolia is five stories. That's a whole square block. This building's only 80 feet wide, or 60, excuse me, 60 feet wide is the lot. And you're going to, the height is going to be greater than the width of the lot. It's extremely disproportionate. It makes no sense. The quality of life is going to go down. What about noise? What about noise reflecting back? Across the street, there's, we have a nice, beautiful courtyard for our residents. There's benches, barbecues. They sit out there in the afternoon. You put up seven stories, that's going to block the sun, possibly sound reverbing back from airport noise. It's just, the city infrastructure, extremely overtaxed sewer system. Last I heard, Millbrae sewer system was overtaxed. Couldn't handle, they can't even handle the waste they have now. How are we going to add this to it? We have a water shortage. Did we forget about that, or is there no water shortage now? Character of the neighborhood, R3, residential. The whole lift thing is really amusing, but I don't see that working for the, and care workers coming to care for these people. The number of staff, I heard, it's not my business, but it does sound a little skinny. But does that include the attendant at the garage? Does that include the cooking staff in the kitchen, the cleaning staff, janitorial?
Sir.
Laundry? Yes.
If you can stick to your time, sorry.
Oh, maybe we should have cut the time when we were listening to wheelchairs whirling downtown and flowers and stuff like that. We listened to two hours of that, and you're going to give me two minutes?
Everybody gets two minutes, sir.
It's unreasonable.
Thank you. Chris Francis? Sorry.
Oh, okay. No, I got it.
Chris Francis, we own the building at 43 Broadway, which is the two apartments on the other side of the little house there. And the L shape comes into our parking lot. Basically, I think what was proposed before was too big, and now we've gone two stories up. When you're asking for the moon and you're asking for the stars now, it's kind of gotten to be ridiculous that we have to put a huge building in an area before we've even done a rezoning of the area. You can't put the cart before the horse. I think we have to wait till the city finishes what they want to do with that Broadway area before we put up a huge seven-story building in the middle of it. Because now I'm going to want to build a seven-story building, Nick's going to want to build a seven-story building, they want to build a seven-story building. We're going to have a huge impact in that one little neighborhood, which is basically six-unit buildings that we need for housing for our people. This is a building that can be put somewhere else that will fit it. And Magnolia's whole block, and that works good. Green Hills is another huge property that works good. This is way too small for what the project is. Way too many people. The ambulances, go down to Mateo and see how many ambulances show up there every day. I mean, I've never been down Mateo when I don't see a fire engine and ambulance there. So that's all I have to say. I have a lot more to say, but we'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pankow. Mr. Zhou Chen?
Good evening, Planning Commissioner. My name is Zhou Chen, living in Millbrae for more than 20 years. Like many other cities, many residents in Millbrae are baby boomers entering their retirement and senior age. As they become older, they need assisted living facility to help them continue their quality life in Millbrae. We have seen many residential real estate developments and other business added in recent years. But the proposed project is the only one that will provide assisted living for senior residents in Millbrae. If we don't add assisted living facility in Millbrae now, we can foresee that the current assisted living facility will not be able to meet the demand in the near future. Senior resident in Millbrae will have to leave Millbrae to receive the service in other cities. Their family will have to travel to other city to visit their senior parents. This will not only cause inconvenience to the families, but also it is a loss of revenue for our city. My friend and my family support the proposed assisted living facility, and we believe that the additional capacity this project brings will benefit the residents of Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Mr. Paul Hong? Would you please give it to the staff? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm a longtime resident in Millbrae. Statistically, I understand that there are approximately 7,000 seniors between the ages of 65 to 84 living in Millbrae. However, I understand that there's approximately 610 assisted living beds available. I believe that additional 98 beds is, in the proposed planning, is much needed. And I strongly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbara Jane? She left? Oh, excuse me. Mr. David Chu? Okay. Mr. Sam Hong? Mr. Sam Hong? You're good? Okay. Okay. Mr. Spencer Liu?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Spencer Liu, who's living in Millbrae for 16 years. And I strongly support this project. And I believe this project will bring up the value of the neighbors' properties. Because if this property can build more stories, it's, it will be the same for the neighbors. So I think the neighbors should support the project also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. We have Catherine Zhang.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Zhang. I lived in Millbrae for 16 years. And my story is, 2008, I have my ill mother. And I was looking for a assisted living, and I couldn't find one close by. And I suffer in my life with my family. So I, when I met Alice for a few years, I can see her passion working with the elderly. I visit her a few times in San Antonio and Oakland, where she, her business. And we talk about it, and she told me that I'm going to have a assisted living home in Millbrae. And I told all my friends, I have a lot of senior friends in their 70s, and we are very excited about it because quality life independent is what we are looking for. We are immigrants. What we looking for? We looking for a better life. We looking for when we get older, kids can live close by, or if we not capable to take care ourselves. And we want to saturate in a assisted living home that close by our kids, our friends, and in a laborhood. So I strongly support where Alice and Mr. Kwong, Mrs. Kwong, what they are propose right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zhang. We have Mr. John Marshall.
Good evening. My name is John Marshall. I'm a resident of Millbrae also. I have a lot more than two minutes to say, so I'm going to just kind of put this in a nutshell here. I strongly agree with the need for this assisted living, totally. What I just don't understand is how this could even fathom fitting on this location. We've got, you're talking about 98 beds possible filling with at least 20 employees, not counting the other service that already been mentioned. I happen to maintain quite a few units right along that stretch of area there on Broadway and Chadbourne. And I'll be the first to admit that almost every single time we go to maintain any of these units, we have to double park. So it's already absolutely impossible to park there. You've got a 15-foot-deep driveway that's supposed to accommodate a car that goes into a garage. It'll never fit. It's going to block the driveways. So I think what I, in respect to the time of this commission, I'm just going to go ahead and write my comments down and send them in to you. But it just sounds like this study session is about two years premature. Because you have a whole litany of things you've got to figure out before you start developing in these areas. And to allow something of this size before your plans are even done, just doesn't make any sense. And as a last note, I just hope that, I do know some of the commissioners personally. Of course, I know of all of you, along with the staff. And you're all competent. You're all good people. And I think you all have your hearts in the right spot for the city of Millbrae. I just listened to what seems to be almost a negotiation already, maybe by pressure. I hope it's just by mind thought pressure. But we're talking an 80-foot-tall... But we're talking an 80-foot-tall building, and we already heard staff say, well, maybe it's even down to like 60 or 65 feet, as though there's already maybe a way to shrink this down and allow it. 60 or 65 feet is still crazy thought process for that corner of Chadbourne and Broadway. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm out of time. So good night.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. And we also have Alice Kwong on here on the speaker slip. Okay. So does the applicant wish to address some of the concerns of the neighbors? Mr. Franco and Ms. Kwong?
We've got to keep it down.
Thank you all. And I also listen for all.
Try to keep it brief.
And we'll work for your comment with the planning department and with our architects. We still wish we can do the best plan in our community. Thank you.
Okay. So that wraps, anybody else want to speak on this particular item? So that wraps up public comments. Commissioners? Anyone? Don't be shy.
Okay, wrote a bunch of notes. This is a study session, so we're just being asked for feedback in terms of what we'd like to do. I would reiterate, I would, sorry. First, I wholeheartedly agree that we do need more senior housing. Obviously, we are very short on that need. I think that's a great thing, and I commend the applicant for the job that you've been doing already. I do feel that in terms of the PD zoning and some flexibility, I'm okay with that in general, because I do think that there are some special differences here. And I do think that the design definitely is better than what it was before. And I was here when that happened, so I do believe that the design is definitely better. Having said all that, I, again, I was here when we had the planning commission in 2016, and I know things have changed. I know we need more housing, all of that. We're working on a downtown-specific plan, et cetera. I was just disappointed to see that in, you know, the planning commission in the staff report had eight recommendations, reducing the height, increasing the setbacks to conform with the zoning standards, increasing landscaping, reducing the number of rooms, increasing the number of parking, incentives for employee visitors to use public transit, and visitor patterns. So some of these were addressed in terms of studies, but I think the biggest issues were actually exacerbated. So at that time, it was a 60-foot, I believe, building, and one of the issues mentioned at that time, and again, with all of the understanding that years have passed, but still for that area, it went from a 60-foot building, which I felt at that time was already quite big, and now it's going to an 85 at the highest and 75 at Chadbourne. The setbacks were going to be already smaller than they should be, and now it's reduced to almost zero. And, you know, if you drive, I drove around the block and walk it, and I'm going, you know, Broadway, it would be lovely if Broadway looked like that, where you don't have any cars and you just have people walking along the sidewalks. It doesn't look like that. It's very, and, you know, the how beyond it on the left, it looks like there's green, you know, green land and open lot. It's not like that. And so having a building of this size, this close to the street and just right off the sidewalk, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. The reduced, number of rooms, I understand, because there are some different changes in terms of, you know, at that time, I think there were two in some rooms and, you know, one to accommodate that. The number of parking, I'm very concerned about the parking, the way it's structured in terms of the number of parking spaces and the access going in and out. And, you know, seeing somebody who's trying to maybe turn off of Broadway to go into this project, but they can't because there's a car coming out, and then now you have other cars that are behind it that are lined up on Broadway because it is a narrow street. The sidewalk is not that, you know, it's five feet wide. I'm just, it just feels very, very, just big to me. So I think as it is, like I said, the design is much better. You know, I like that the balcony, that there are balconies that are just decorative and it breaks it up, but making up for an 80-foot building, it's basically, and if you look, if you look at the elevation, I don't have to call it up, but when you look at the elevation, the house that's right next door, I think it was 70, 75 Broadway, it's basically the first floor of that, the basement level first floor. It maybe goes a little bit higher than that, and I just think that that is very overshadowed. And even if you compare it to the Bellamore or to the other buildings across the street, it does just feel very high. So those are my comments. I might have some more, but, you know, I just have a lot of different concerns. And again, all of it, you know, of course, premised on, you know, senior housing is important, assisted living is important. I have parents who are in their 80s as well, and, you know, at some point, they may need something like this, and I hope that they would be able to find a really good facility. I just don't know if this is where or the size, where it should be for the size that it is. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Ms. Zhou. Who wants to go next?
I might have.
Vice Chair Whip?
Yeah. I too feel the need for senior housing is extremely important, although we are going to be displacing eight people from this when that happens. So we want to keep that in mind. I just feel that it is like totally out of scale with all of the neighborhood. When we're looking at the Bellamore, the portion at the Bellamore facing the apartments on Broadway is very low. That's why we had created it, to make it feel like it's more residential. And then at the end, when it got down to the commercial, this actually is the opposite. I, I think Alice's and Michael's hearts are in the right place. I think that if it was the whole block, like the Magnolia, we could make more exceptions on it. I just, it just, what somebody did say, and it's true, you're going to have 80 feet up and 60 feet. I mean, you don't even get that almost in San Francisco, the relationship of the front to height. Well, you do in San Francisco, but then it's all like that. I was disappointed to see something larger than what came before us last time. I really am. We felt it was, I felt it was too big last time. And I just have concerns about the parking in the area. So either it has to be bigger lot-wise, it's just too impacted. That's enough.
Down this way. Commissioner Wong?
So we always have this dilemma. We always have this presentations in front of the planning commissions about exceptions and variances, and people are trying to modernize their homes, and we're trying to renovate the city, and this is really, really what we're trying to do, is we're really trying to re-envision what our city is going to look like. And when we re-envision what our city is going to look like, we don't really look at the city the way it is now, like a really large complex next to a single-family house. We think about where we want to go and what we're trying to accomplish. And even with these BART station development plans, a lot of these development plans around the BART station, there's very large buildings, and there's very large buildings right next to people's existing homes that look out of place, that are too big, that are too massive. And yet, there's a lot of the needs, and we're trying to solve housing issues and envision what our city of Millbury will look like. So given that, we need to strike the balance, and we need to find out what this balance is about what our city is going to look like and how it's going to develop, and what we allow with the vision that we have going in the future, not as it is right now. In terms of, like a lot of the residents have mentioned, that we're a little bit cart before the horse, because we don't have the general plan in place yet. But we do have some guidelines. We do have the Millbury Station area-specific plan, which basically states that within half-mile of the BART station, that we want to see more of these developments. We want to see more larger multi-use, high-density buildings. And so these types of buildings and these types of projects are encouraged. And as, and this, even though it may seem not the right, exact, perfect location, it is in that transition zone where we're going from larger developments along Al Camino to, you know, moving in toward Broadway, which is commercial, and we want to develop a whole downtown commercial development zone, which is likely going to go very vertical if we can. And there'll be mixed use with housing and commercial. And then going along with it, you know, we're already starting to see these larger developments along Al Camino. And, you know, basically, we need to really think of it then hard, think hard about what this area is going to look like. And I guarantee you that in the future, with the general plan, we're going to make a push for these streets along Broadway to have higher density and to be more vertical. That's, that's what a lot of the housing advocates want to see. That's what all the regional planners who've came in and said, you guys need to look at the BART station plans, and you need to really encourage development and provide housing for people. So given that, there's always growing pains, there's always a transition period, and we need to try to find out how we can work with each other to satisfy the neighbors. Hopefully, we find a solution that's a win-win, where everyone wins, that we know that if there's large developments, that it applies not just to single parcels here and there. We're not hand-selecting and doing piecemeal projects, but that we have this whole area mapped out where we are going to allow these large developments, so that in the future, it won't look out of place to have a large building there, whether it's five stories, six stories, seven stories, but that, you know, up and down the street, you know, it'll be consistent. So I'm really looking forward towards that we have zoning, not just for single parcels, but that we address higher-density developments, kind of in more thoughtfully and more completely planned out. And I see this street as, as having that higher density. It meets all the requirements. If we, if we go by a design guideline, we already have the MSASP. And I'm surprised that this location, maybe we should take a measurement, because I believe that this would fall under that MSASP, no? There is, it's very close or just outside. So it's kind of odd that maybe even if across the street it applies, but right at this exact property, it doesn't apply. So we need to think about how we apply it consistently, too. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Ms. Davis?
Okay, so the planning commission tonight is being asked its input on three things: the proposed planned development zoning district, the building mass and scale, and building design. So I'm going to try and stick to those three. The notion of a proposed, the planning development zoning district, I am in favor of. This is a special facility. It needs different standards. With that, we don't, we was pretty much told we get to make up the rules at this point. It's pretty much how it goes. We're not going to be applying the setbacks and height limits for our three, but it'll be something different. We don't yet know what that's going to be. The city is moving toward probably higher density and higher height limits. Okay. We don't know exactly where that's going to end up, but I would hate to see us put this, everything in downtown on hold for a year or two until we finish the general plan update and the downtown-specific plan. I don't think we can just sit around and wait for that to happen, so I think we need to come up with some sort of plan for projects such as this. The building is very tall. It is, it is, doesn't have big setbacks or anything. We'll have to figure out, I think, as a commission, where we could go with that. How high are we comfortable with, and how big should the setbacks be, if there's any? In general, the building design is lovely. The direction that you've taken it in for the architectural style is much better now. So this is a step in the right direction. A lot of the details we're talking about right now, parking and traffic, those will be studied, so I trust that we'll find the right solutions for that once we have those studies in hand. So that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. A few things comes to mind when I look at this. I mean, we do have an aging population, whether we like it or not. People are living longer, and we're getting healthier, which is a good thing. We're eating more low-fat food and gluten-free, right? So we live longer, and we're going to need these facility more and more and more. And I'm glad to see that an experienced operator is willing to do that and develop that in our city. I think we needed it. This is an expensive place to live. I mean, this is a little part of the world that we call Bay Area, that is so desirable. Everybody wants to be here, and we all want to be close to our, you know, parents and grandparents and great-grandparents, right? We don't want to be driving two hours away to Manteca to see them, right? We want to be close to us, and they want to be close to our kids, right? So recognizing the need of the proximities to be able to visit our seniors are important as well. This little part of the world is very expensive to live in. So, you know, being able to find creative solutions to cohabit in this little place and to share that cost of living is important. So a little bit more density, a little bit more height is to be expected, but we have to be doing it in a responsible fashion. Now, several things comes to mind when I look at the plans as well. You know, it is a tall building. It stands out quite a lot. I mean, if you, being as it proposed, just looking at the picture and the rendering and how it scaled, right, compared to the neighborhood, it's very towering. So I think, you know, first and foremost, you know, for the staff, something like a shadow study would certainly be important, something to look at. And I think more neighborhood outreach is going to be required, right? I mean, this is a very significant project. It's going to be very, very iconic at that little corner right there. So I think, you know, getting consensus from the neighbors is important. When we listen to a lot of neighbors coming up and speak, some are in favor, some are more concerned about it. So, you know, try to strike a balance, you know, between what everybody wants and needs could be important. So I think having an extra neighborhood outreach program organized by the applicant would certainly be beneficial, I would imagine. It certainly helps the due process. Some of the other things that, you know, we talked about a little earlier, you know, technical stuff such as, you know, forward-facing vehicular traffic, parking deliveries, all those things would have to obviously work itself out over time. I think this plan is certainly not going to be far from, is certainly far from being completed. There's so much more that needs to go in, right? We also have to have some sort of a study on, you know, utility upgrades and what the infrastructure upgrade would need to be in order to support a facility such as this that brings in potentially another over 100 occupants at any given time on a street that is typically not zoned for that type of development or density, and the amount of people that it needs to bring in. Nobody has actually talked about this, but, you know, I like to see some sort of a financial impact on this, what it means to the city to have, you know, another extra 100 people coming in.
I don't think it's in our purview to do that.
You don't think so?
I mean, I think as Commissioner Davis mentioned, we were asked to talk about zoning design review and, forgot what the last one was. I don't, I don't know if, and, and I would say even a shadow study, I think we need to first be determined if we're okay with an 80-foot-tall building, and if the consensus is that we are, then you do a shadow study is not something that somebody can just do on their computer, or you do it on computer, but it's actually very costly, I believe. And I don't And I don't know if it makes sense to do that if we're not at a point where we're ready with setbacks and, you know, and all of that. So, I feel like that's a little premature anyway, as for a shadow study. But I think infrastructure and definitely fiscal impact, I don't think that is our purview. I mean, you know, we don't approve or disapprove of or reject proposals for housing based on how many people you can get in there, what the fiscal impact is. Anyway, that's a different thing, but I'm not sure if that's, I feel like that's kind of early day. And I don't know if we would be, our approval or not approving of it would have, should have to do with the, you know, impact on finances. That's my feel on it. I feel like we're getting beyond where, you know, like I think we do need to put, yes, density housing, yes, it's right outside MSASP, yes, it's in the downtown-specific plan, but, and yes, we do, you know, density, I get density. I'm for, all for density. I'm all for housing. How, you know, where are we going to go with this? Where, like even things like setbacks, design, all of that, are people comfortable with that? Because I'm not, are we comfortable with that? Yeah, because, because I'm not. And even the design, I think, traffic study is traffic study, but I just don't feel comfortable with having a one 12-foot access to that garage when you're dealing with close to 100 people in this one spot. And if anything, one building, and if anything happens, they're all exiting out of that, or not all, I guess they can come out of the main entrances, but things like that, I feel like we haven't, I'd like to talk about that or hear what people feel about that because I don't, I don't think anybody's questioning need for senior housing. I don't think anybody's questioning need for density. I think we are all agreed on that. We've been talking about it, but, you know, what is this street, this neighborhood, you know, what can it handle? You know, yes, it's part of Broadway, but if you drive through it, it's not where the commercial area is, right? It's the multifamily district, so it is different. And, you know, even with the developments, the major developments at the BART station, you know, that was all done as part of the zoning and the plan, right? But, and my question at the very beginning about PD zoning, you know, the way that, one of the ways that that is allowed is because there's a contiguous project that already has PD zoning. So, now if we just go forward with this, we're kind of opening up the door for others, and I totally agree with Commissioner Fang about, I mean, Commissioner Wong about, you know, we don't want to do so many spot things, you know, and it's hard because it, yes, it is taking us a long time to go, you know, do the general station, general plan and the downtown-specific plan. And I get that it's hard for, you know, people who are trying to do good things, but at the same time, you know, I'm very, very hesitant about doing an 80-foot exception almost. So, sorry, I'm just, because I keep hearing the same density and I'm like, yes, we all know that, but how about this project? You know, what is the design? What are, is everybody good with the zero, one-to-three-foot setback on a very narrow street that already has a lot of parking, I mean, traffic and parking issues? Are we all good with that? I'm not, so...
I think impacts to the city on such a project like this, you know, it's a pretty good, you know, it's a very big-sized project, right? And I think the impact to the city is more than just, you know, the amount of setback and heights and density, right? It has a lot more to it. And it brings in, you know, another additional 100 people to the city. It is going to be at least two, maybe even three years long. The city will have to sustain a certain amount of infrastructure upgrades and all the other things. And I think, so I think, you know, it is, you might say that it may not be within the purview of the Planning Commission to look at the financial impact, but I think it is because I think the people has the right to know what this project will bring to the city in terms of impact. And then I think, you know, when we interpret impact, it's a lot more than just setback at heights and colors, right? So, so I think that, you know, I would insist on that. That was actually a very important piece of the whole puzzle. As far as looking at, I think, you know, in terms of size and heights and setbacks and all that, and I think so, some of those things, changes are here to happen, right? And I don't think we're likely to build buildings that are smaller and shorter than what it used to be. So, you know, getting people to, having everybody to be on board with these changes, it's going to be, it's going to be important. So, that's why I would advocate to have, you know, a neighborhood outreach meeting organized by the applicant so that they can invite everybody, all the neighborhoods around, you know, maybe 300, you know, 300 square feet radius, and then have them have a chance to go over the plan. Because I don't remember we actually performed some, a meeting such as this for a project of this size. I mean, you're proposing a very sizable project, so having an opportunity for all the neighbors to come in and chime in on it, on the design, would be important. So, those are some of my comments. Ms. Quip?
I just realized, we didn't bring up these two emails that came to us.
True.
For the record.
Three now.
Three?
Yeah, we have a third one that just got handed by the staff.
He spoke, yeah. He spoke. The gentleman over there.
This is a different name, different location.
Sorry.
Yeah, but anyway, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget.
Okay, so, what would you like to do? You want to read it out or?
I think it's pretty long, but we did receive an email from a Scotch charrette and...
Why don't we just have it posted on our website so that everybody gets a chance to, so that we fully disclose instead of reading it?
Yeah, make sure that, for the record, that there was two emails that...
Have them available on the city website as part of the package so that it's fully disclosed? Okay?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
To follow up with Commissioner Joe's comments, we want to know more about what we feel comfortable with, okay? I'll just put some numbers out there. I think I'd be okay with 60 feet. That's probably a five-story building. I'd probably be okay with that, given it is going to be in the downtown planning area, that if we're going to increase heights, I don't think 60 feet's out of the realm of our possibility of where we're going to end up. As for the setbacks, I'm probably okay with them being as small as they are. I'm not bothered by them being right on the sidewalk, basically, on the two sides that front the street. So, there's my additional comments.
Okay, good.
I think I'd want it even a little bit shorter because of the size of the lot it I don't know, maybe four feet? I mean, you know, four stories, and then you're going to have the bottom floor because it's going to need some garage. I have big concerns about the size of the garage, so the door, it's just totally unsafe. You're better off with nothing than to have this and have too much congestion. So, yeah, I think last time they came in at 60 feet and there was not, we were all saying 60 is too much. So, I think maybe a little bit shorter than that. That's why I was hoping that we could do that. And I know that would be a big difference to the neighborhood, but as it has been said, SB 50 is going to make us do things we don't want to do, so we should try to build things that we can live with.
Okay. Mr. Wong?
As I mentioned before, I would suggest going by the MSASP document, even though it falls outside the Millbury Station area-specific plan. That document is a really good reference where there's a lot of community input, a lot of design guidelines and principles and thoughts about architectural details and design guidelines that we would like to see and encourage in our community, how it would apply to this as much as possible. I think we should think about how it applies. And then also, again, we need to take into consideration neighborhood concerns also, lights, privacy, other issues, parking, traffic, et cetera. And a lot of that is mentioned also in the MSASP, that we should consider all these different issues. The more planning and more planning documents would be good. As mentioned previously, we would look forward to the SEQA documents, and that also covers a lot of the other issues, has sections on traffic, parking, city impacts. Really want to see the impacts, more impacts of this and including how it would be constructed and the impact on neighborhoods during construction and geotech concerns, making sure that it doesn't undermine anyone else's foundation and properties while this pretty large excavation. So, a lot of these factors still need to be considered and looked into, too.
Does the applicant want to say something?
Thank you for all the comment. First of all, I want to clarify, compared for TOD 1, TOD 2, that we're going to have more than 2,000 people moving in. It will 10% raise up for our community population. And currently, our plan is only for 100. And those 100 people need our help and when they lost their independency. And I thought maybe some of us and some they need to be live there. And those people, they are not able to actively go out by themselves, so the traffic is not going to created by our residents inside. That's, please make that very clear. The second, those parking is for staff. They're working eight-hour shift or 10-hour shift. They're not going out within those days. So, compared for someone's apartment building, for 24 apartment and have four of the 24, it's almost 100 people, they have more traffic, much more traffic than my staff for 10-hour shift, eight-hour shift. They're not driving in and out. They don't need to. And those people come to visit, maybe couple people to visit a date. And so, the traffic is such too overwhelming about the building and those people parking in and out will create too much traffic. It's overwhelming. I don't agree with that. And the second, for the hospice, maybe someone never know until people's ending of life. If you do have a loved one, you do the loved one living in the home as a citizen, you don't want them to lose their home when we're getting sick, ending of life. That's how we provide a service. And we are basic human beings. We have someone born, we also have someone end of their life. It should be everyone to understand that and have love to provide service for those people need us to help for their last days. And also, compared for current downtown plan, if understanding our Millbury is such a great location and downtown, current, all those buildings, the environment is not acceptable. That's why we're willing to spend some money to make a more beautiful downtown and as part of my commitment, be a good resident in the community. And we are not looking for today's downtown. We're looking for future downtown. Even for future, our plan is still good and fit our community needs. Thank you.
I mean, here we are. We have listened to, you know, commissioner comments, public comments. One moment, one moment.
We are willing to coordinate our, for the neighborhoods gathering. Thank you.
I mean, here we are today. We have listened to 13 speakers, right? We have commissioner comments, we have the applicant speaks. I think it's important that, you know, even among, you know, all of us, that we all have different wants and needs and what we see, how we see Millbury going forward, right? So, I think it's in, it's in the best interest of the public as well as the applicant that, you know, I would advocate to have another neighborhood meeting that you host so that everybody get a chance to chime in and be able to contact you and discuss with you the plan. So, you have a chance to show the public as well and listen to what they have to say. So, everybody has a chance to fully vet out the project, have a broader, have a broader audience, right? So, you have a chance to discuss your project with your neighbors. So, I think that would be an important piece. Anybody else have more comments about this?
If I may, just one more.
Please.
I want to make sure that it's clear, even as, you know, I think it's great that the applicant is willing to do a neighborhood, you know, community outreach.
Yes.
I think in the midst of that, maybe it would be helpful to, to assume that everyone has a heart for the seniors, you know, and for housing, because I don't think that the people who have objections or concerns, nobody is saying that we don't think it's needed. And I think that it sounds like you've been doing, you know, the applicant has been doing a great job. So, nobody is doubting that. Nobody is trying to say that we don't need senior housing, that we don't care for seniors. And so, even as discussions happen with neighbors, I think it's important to really kind of make that assumption, just assume that we all feel that way, but at the same time, we just need to make sure that the project itself is in the, you know, in the right place, the design, the, you know, where it needs to be and, you know, kind of recognizing that. So, I, because I think otherwise, it just feels not, you know, because it feels like, well, if you have an objection, that means you don't care about seniors, and that's not true.
I don't think anybody's...
So, I don't think anybody's saying that, but I think that even that discussion doesn't need to go too much more because that's not what people are having an issue, you know, their concerns are. You know, the concerns have to do with the design review, the zoning and whatnot, and the safety, you know, definitely, and how we are building Millbury. And I think that's, that's, it's really tough. We're in a time of transition, so...
One second, one second. Wait, 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 wait. You need to speak, you will need to speak a slip, ma'am. You had your two minutes, sir. Ma'am, so if you need to speak, I'll give you two minutes. If you can fill out a slip. We're going to have, we're going to have more neighborhood meetings. You're going to have more opportunity to see the plans, for sure.
Well, this is a study session.
I know.
Yeah, and the other thing is, this is a study session, so it's not like...
Exactly. There's no action taken tonight. Ma'am, go ahead and speak, and then you get your two minutes.
It's just getting people...
And then bring in a slip later. Thank you, in the interest of time.
This is not what happens in a public, at a public...
Thank you. I do understand that.
A study session.
Correct.
I agree.
Go ahead.
I'm Deborah Corcamelis. We own 70 Broadway.
Okay. Close to the mic, please, ma'am.
Yes. So, I just wanted to say that this is a business, just like how our apartment complex is our business, and it's truly going to affect us. So, and I do know that, you know, we all have parents, but this is a business for you, just like our apartment complex is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner wish to make any more comments, questions for anybody else?
I have a question, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, just, no, no.
That's fine.
This is just procedural, so, in terms of, because I saw in here that in terms of the planning, what are the PD zoning, that's also going to go to city council, right? So...
That's correct.
I just wanted to know if it works.
The zoning amendment, right?
That's correct, because it's under the municipal code, because this is a legislative act. The entitlements that would be appropriate for this project would be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council. So, because it is a change of zoning, the final decision rests with the city council, if it's recommended by the commission.
So, I do have one more question.
The mic's on.
I thought we were done. Even if we were to go, they came up with the plan development now, but it would still be a plan development and a zoning change even if it shrunk down a lot, right?
That's correct. The current zoning is R3, which allows 40-feet building. So, if it, if it were to increase above that, under the current, there's a few ways. The commission heard a few years ago, a request for an exception and some variances to the heightened setbacks. So, and under that situation, that wouldn't be a PD zoning. That's one way to address the issues. This is another is a PD zoning, given the circumstances of this particular project.
Except, would you have enough findings for a variance if we went to, say, 45?
The variance findings would be dependent on the characteristics of the lot. So, if the commission were to find that there are unusual circumstances related to the physical characteristic of the lot that's not presently... the physical characteristic of the lot that's not presently currently available to, to other properties in the neighborhood, then a variance could, could be a potential application.
I'm just trying to think if, if they could fit into the zoning, the way it is, it would save everyone a lot of time and energy.
This, the proposal, right, the proposal is allowed with a conditional use permit under this current zoning, which would, would still need to be reviewed by the planning commission. Now, the, the additional height and reduced setbacks and, and parking are the things that would complicate the, that project for fitting into the current zoning.
What, what is the normal width of a sidewalk?
It, it depends on the location. I don't think, I'm not sure of the exact width of this sidewalk at this property. That's something that we'd have to look into.
That whole street, both that street and the one north of that, the sidewalks are really short. So, that makes a big difference. And the streets are narrow, so. Okay. Well, it's just information.
I normally won't do this, but since I made the exception for the lady earlier for two minutes, you know, there's another speaker who want to speak. And does anybody else want to speak? This is the last one. Okay. If commissioners are okay, give him two minutes. Mr. Stanley Feng, who has no relations to me, by the way.
Is it Feng?
Yes.
My cousin probably. You don't know about.
I'm not sure about that, but.
Hi, I'm a resident in Millbury, as a second resident, 635 San Bravo. I have hear all the negatives and positives of the impact of this project that Alice have here. And look behind the wall there, this is built in 1948. We're in a different area where three quarter of the population have moved close to coast, especially in the Bay Area. We do need residents in Millbury. And me, as a resident here, I would love to stay in her place in the future if this project gets underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feng. That wraps up new business 8A.
Oh, we still have something else.
We do. We have staff updates.
Yes.
Which is Taiwu conditional use permit.
We're done, can I ask one question?
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Did staff get enough information?
Yeah, sure, of course. I think we have a long, we have a lot of discussion tonight, but.
Right. I think Commissioner Joe, did you have any additional comments on the height and setbacks? I think that you were probably alluding to something that.
Oh, well, I, Commissioner just mentioned 60 feet. I think at this point, I could go with 60 or something, but 80, I don't feel good about. Setbacks, I'm still kinda whatever, but I'll see. And then the traffic, definitely the access to the garage, I think is something. And I'll just leave it at that.
Probably needs a second egress.
For safety. For safety, yeah.
Personally, I don't think I would want to commit to a particular number in terms of setback heights and massing. I'd like to hear what more resident has to say after they have another chance to get more outreach done. I'd like to listen to a lot more people, what they had to say in order to make up my mind about what I would consider a reasonable height setback and massing.
We have all said our piece.
Sure.
If you have any questions, you can certainly call us.
Yeah, and I would encourage every commissioner, if they have more comments after they get more chances to review the plan, to reflect upon things that we've heard tonight, send it to the staff. Okay? Anything else before we conclude item 8A? Okay? So, that would conclude the new business 8A on 97 Broadway tonight. Thank you very much, everybody. Item number nine, staff updates, Taiwu conditional use permits.
Yes, so, thank you, Chair Feng. With regards to the Taiwu conditional use permit, staff will be, will be bringing forth for the commission's consideration and extension to Taiwu's conditional use permit. That, that is anticipated to be, let's see here, we're March 2nd, so next month. Currently, the way that the, the conditional use permit reads is that the commission, the project was approved in 2014 for five years and 2017 was, 2014 for five years and that would end in 2017. In 2017, the conditional use, where it was extended for another two years and that kind of lands us to where we are today. So, the applicant has to demonstrate that the, they're able to provide the adequate parking for the amount of seats that they have at the restaurant. And back in 2017, they, they, they had demonstrated that they have secured the lease agreements with either parking lot or other properties for the, for the amount of parking that they're needed. And they still have the amount of parking. They're currently on a month-to-month basis with those parking agreements. In any event that the property were to somehow not be able to secure those spaces for whatever reason, if the parking, if the property owner decides to lease into somebody else, that would require the, the restaurant to reduce the number of seats. But, but we don't, we, from what staff has seen and for what the applicant has provided to staff, that's something that we still have currently. So, we're going to be recommending an additional two-year extension similar to the last time. So, if commissioner has any comments or questions?
Two-year extensions from when?
From, so that would land 2021 into 2021.
So, the conditional use permits will lapse at 2021?
So, that, that's, that's, that's will be staff's recommendation. So, no, there's no, there's no project here tonight, but when the project comes before the commission next month, that, that's something that will look to extend the, the permit for, for the same amount of time as 2017, which was two years.
And what is the basis of extending it?
That the conditions of approval are still being met and that there were happening to be any, any circumstances or changes that would result in revocation of the permit.
Did they perform on everything that they did?
To staff's knowledge, yes.
Because there was a lot of other conditions and addition.
There, there are additional, there are several conditions within the conditions of approval. And if, if there is a, an item that, that the applicants are not meeting, they would either need to correct it or, or staff would not recommend approval of the permit. But from what, from what we've understood from the project description and, and the operations that the current operations are meeting the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I'd like to see them work a little harder on the outside.
Could you be more specific as to?
Everything should be inside those little buildings.
Right.
And they don't seem to do that. And I believe a part of it, is that, is the wall been fixed on the outside?
We'll have to double check on, on that. I don't know offhand, but we'll go out there and.
It's just unfortunate because it's right on the El Camino.
Yes.
I mean, if, if there was something that wasn't so visible.
Right.
It, it would be.
I think we're going into, this is staff update, so we shouldn't be going into conversation and meeting about it, so.
We can talk.
Yeah.
Once they have an application before us, then we can go into detail a little bit more, right? But we certainly like to make sure that, you know, we'd like to see the applicant to try harder, right? Making sure that they ratify the parking situation because we keep hearing about it from the people, right? Obviously, the fire code, I think there's a certain amount of parking ratio to patron ratio that they have to meet.
Yes.
By fire code and they certainly have to meet those requirements. Otherwise, we can't grant that many occupancy, right? So, those are gonna be the most important consideration factors. But we, obviously, we don't want to shut down our local businesses. I mean, that's not our goal, right? So, other comments from other commissioners?
I wasn't here when they received the original conditional use permit, so I've been interested in seeing the background and the history of that. It seems kind of unusual why there would be one business. I know many of the businesses in Millbury, the restaurants, auto shops, et cetera. I don't see other, you know, consistent application of requiring parking for certain business or not. So, I'm kinda curious why we would single out certain businesses to require special use conditions and permits for parking, whereas it doesn't appear that other restaurants may be required to have parking lots and provide so many parking spaces. I'd like to see if there is a policy for the city that it be applied consistently across all businesses.
Uniformly.
Uniformly, right?
Yep. Very well. Any other staff updates? That?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
I saw something about a public portal for transparency, for searching the city records and things like that. Does that include the permits and, and whatnot?
I certainly hope so.
Is that, is that what it was about? Because I haven't had a chance to look at it. So, I did see an announcement about in the interest of transparency that you can do more search, you can search a public portal. Is that part of the permit record?
I thought that was.
Search?
I thought, I understood that email to be Information Act, part of the Information Act.
Okay, so it's not, that's not the, because I haven't looked at it yet, so I, okay.
Yeah, it has to do with that, so you don't have to.
Sure. Public records in general, not the.
Staff and all that. You go to that portal and you can search all that stuff. That's the way I understood.
Yes.
I didn't read it.
So, is there any update on terms, because I know Commissioner Feng's mentioned it before about having the permit, being able to search permits and statuses and all that?
The importance of it.
Is there, right? Is there any update on that?
The city's looking into a different vendor for permitting and currently looking at a few different types and.
Different permitting, what do you mean by that?
For.
Record keeping, you mean?
Record keeping and permitting as well. So, if somebody were to submit an application for building permit.
Right.
And our system currently isn't fitting our needs, so we're looking at a few different options for that. And that, that's one thing that we're considering. But we're, we're not sure yet where we're, we're gonna land on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think it started something.
I think I may have said that a few times on this commission, the need of having, you know, transparencies to our residents and people who can look up their permits or even neighbors' permits online so that, you know, I mean, it will help, certainly help reduce the workload of your department. People keep calling in and say, oh, you know, I hear a jackhammer going, you know, do they have a permit? You know, that sort of thing. And so, also at the same time, people who put in their applications, they don't know where their permits has gone. They don't know where the application process, you know, is, where they've been, you know, how much approval they need, you know, whether their application has already been assigned, looked at, what else, you know, other documents they need, so on and so forth. So, having a full transparency on looking up their own permit applications or someone else's application permits, permit applications are, it's crucial.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It's not just transparency, it's customer service.
Exactly.
Right.
Really.
So, people, so people understand, you know, where they are in terms of that process, you know, because oftentimes I've been pulled over in Lucky's and Safeway that they say, Commissioner Feng, you know, where, you know, my application's been in there for six months, where is it? You know? So, I wish there's a way for us to give them that information easily.
Right. What I will say is that staff is working with our, our website provider to provide greater information and more transparency with regards to the projects that the planning commission considers. So, that, that, what we're looking into doing, and we have done already a test run, is a map with pins for different development project sites, both commercial and residential. So, you can see where in the city those projects are and you can even go to the, to the webpage for that particular project and look at the, the, the description of the project, the project planner, contact information and that sort of thing, as well as, you know, plans for that project as well, so.
Commissioner comments?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Quip?
I am.
Something to share?
Absolutely. So, I know they've made a lot of new changes. I thought I was done. There's been a lot of new changes January 1st on the ADUs. And there was an interesting article about Burlingame and they already have something in place and they're making changes to it. And I'm so disappointed that Millbury doesn't have anything yet. So, I would really like to see something at least move forward.
Right. We, we actually have a draft ordinance that's currently being reviewed by staff. So, we have a draft ordinance and the ADU ordinance will be, we anticipate going to the commission with that April or May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, I do want to say that there are several cities, Burlingame, San Jose, I was thinking, want something to the, to the planning commission and city council.
Because there have been some changes. And I, there's one other thing. I have to commend staff on this project that came before us this evening. Something like this must have taken hours to prepare. So, when we say, how come this isn't done and that isn't done? We see something like this with hours of work. You know, unfortunately, nothing else gets done. So, I wanted to thank you guys for doing all that.
Yes. I think Sam did a great job. And it, it was a very short turnaround. That's one thing that probably don't know, it was a short turnaround. I think Sam did a great job with the staff report. But going back to the ADU, there is, there are certain, the legislation isn't perfect, so we're having to grapple with some of the issues regarding inconsistencies and having to confer with the city attorney's office on that. But rest assured, we are reviewing a draft in-house and, and Sam's doing a great job on, on that and he will, will take something to the commission in the next two, three months.
Does anybody want a copy of this?
It's on a newspaper, isn't it?
Huh?
It's on the newspaper, isn't it?
Daily Journal, Friday.
Sure.
Want it?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll send it to you. I'll scan it and then I will send it to you so you can pass it.
Yeah, I do believe there has been some legislative changes since January 1st at the state level for ADUs.
Yeah, they did make changes.
It makes, you know, quite a bit of changes.
But they did.
Size, number of ADU units, you know, detach, attach, so on and so forth. So, I mean, the lack of having a particular ADU ordinance, you know, for our own city, you know, we're, we're left with just whatever the state law allows them to do, right? So, I understand that there's a lot on you guys' plate, you know, everything had to be prioritized. So, but, you know, we're not gonna forget about this, so.
I'd just like to add, you know, we, we have had a couple of workshops, ADU ordinance workshops, so, and we did, I believe we did have a study session with the planning commission on ADUs.
Right.
So, we've, we've gotten a lot of good feedback and I think you'll be happy with draft ordinance when we bring it back, where we've really worked hard to incorporate design elements, where, where the city can and does have discretion in developing the ADUs, especially looking at heights and specifically design elements. So, I think you'll be pleased that we were able to listen to planning commission and the public in developing Millbury's local ADU ordinance.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other commissioner wants to make any comments? Announcements?
I have my shredding party on April 4th.
I knew you're gonna do that.
Mills High School. E-waste recycling as well, so.
Okay, oh, e-waste too?
E-waste recycling as well.
Awesome.
It'll be free. E-waste.
Like monitor.
Electronic waste, yes.
Laptop.
Yeah, monitors, computers, no light bulbs and stuff, batteries.
Why are all those wires?
April 4th, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Mills High School. April 4th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Mills High School, and if you have any questions, you can ask me later. So, but it is free, and it's, we're raising money for Mills High School, so you're welcome to come by.
Any other announcements?
Just a reminder for everyone to do their civic duty and vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Tomorrow's election.
That Tuesday, huh?
I know people that voted for Amy, and now she's not even there.
Okay. Are we having a meeting next week? I, next time, March 16th, is that our next meeting?
Yes, that is, that is our next meeting, and it's still on the schedule. We will be, it'll be a study session, receiving information on the climate action plan.
Climate action plan?
Yeah.
Incredible. Okay. Any other announcements before we adjourn?
700 forms done.
Right, that's right. Oh, yeah, I attended the harassment workshop thing. I think every two years, isn't it?
Ethics, it's, there's ethics training, and then there's the harassment training that, what happened last week, on, or you have to do it online, so it's two different things. Ethics is different from harassment.
Any other announcements? We're all done? Thank you.
Stay healthy.
I know. Nobody coughing?